Good afternoon, everyone.
It's dark in here.
Mm-hmm. Shades are all shot.
She is.
Okay. Start this work session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt. Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Prove the agenda is prepared?
Second.
Most have been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. We are open and we have a presentation from the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance in Chamber, so welcome.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to report some of the things that are happening. I'm Bob Smith, the current Chair of GCVA, and really just want to open our remarks with a thank you to the city of Waterloo and our continued partnership with you. Our goal is to continue to enhance the energy in the businesses in the area and as they grow and expand, as well as make this a place that people are proud to make home. So a lot of our initial purpose statements are very similar. Our base is, we've had a number of changes taking place this last year with, we've just taken Carrie Dara from interim CEO to acting CEO. We've done some studies and so forth. Steve Dust, who each of you know, carried us from really inception, a 14-year run, and now as we've re-engaged a lot of our base and looking forward to the future, we're excited about the opportunity for us to become more influential in the area of seeing economic development, talent and labor workforce issues that need to be addressed, that we become a continued growth of being that hub and support to what you as the city do, and we see our relationship really is an ongoing partnership. One of the issues that we're facing on the front is, and we'll be having some discussions, is just on how our competition, how do we compete with Dubuque? How do we compete with, pick any city around the world, literally, and how are groups like us being funded? And there's opportunity for us to learn from that, and hopefully you'll be seeing some proposals in the coming year on more of a partnership as far as funding sources, which will allow us to be doing things at a bigger scale for our overall community. So, thank you for having us tonight. I know we've got a number of folks that'll be taking a number of different updates. If you have questions, Carrie will be closing things out for us, but please feel free to interrupt and ask any questions as we go along. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to our community. Really appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hart, members of the City Council. I'm Lisa Scoobal with the Alliance in Chamber, as you know, and involved in the economic development and of the work we do at the Alliance in Chamber. We have had some excellent projects this fiscal year, and we were so, it was such a collaborative effort this year amongst our office with Noel and Adrian, and of course, Cassie from our office, that we're able to realize Crystal Distribution's expansion, Tyson Foods, and Advanced Heat Treats so far. And collectively, these projects represented 257 new jobs promised to the city of Waterloo with a weighted average rate of 18:40 an hour, which is above the living wage rate that you had wanted to, or you had outlined in your strategy initiative that you established two years ago. That represents almost $42 million in new capital investment that is being made or that will be made this calendar year, and nearly 300,000 square feet that would be built this year of new construction, mostly industrial, all contributing to goal one of the city's strategic plan, which is great. We had two additional projects that we've been working on, and we expected them to be announced this spring. Unfortunately, both of those projects have been put on hold for an undetermined amount of time, and while we don't know what the timetable is, we certainly feel that those projects will happen. Some of it has been market-related and affecting one company's, all of the company's projects across the board, not just the one they were looking at for Waterloo, but we'll continue to stay on top of those. Currently, there are 29 project opportunities, including those just mentioned, as of the 1st of May, with a potential of $261 million and over 1,100 new job creation, one of which Waterloo, or Adrian from the planning staff, met with last week concerning a possible new location in the city, and Adrian is doing some follow-up as we speak. We completed a Midwest prospecting initiative for the first half of 2018. We reached out to 964 companies, and with that, we generated eight leads with meetings or conference calls. This winter, Cassie Grimsman from our staff completed and published the Industry Insights Report, and just recently completed its companion piece, The Talent Report, which is presently at the printers. We will share both reports with you in our follow-up material, encourage you to reach out to Noel, Adrian, or Cassie if you would like to discover these publications in greater detail and what they mean. Cassie is scheduling follow-up in-person meetings with existing businesses in Waterloo to continue to monitor opportunities for growth and needs for retention on a one-to-one basis. Our talent initiative, which Bob just touched on, is a very important component to our economic development. We just finished overhauling the Live the Valley website, and it is live, and you have that URL in your packet. We're doing a soft launch right now, just working out a few of any changes we want to make before we promote through digital and social media campaign. Live the Valley website promotes the quality of life in Waterloo and in the Cedar Valley for people moving here for the first time, reacquainting themselves to the area if they haven't lived here in quite a while, and then showing new residents already here, other types of quality of life in the Cedar Valley they may not have known before that existed, and that's our retention component. Also, if you haven't seen on our website, is an Economic Inclusion Toolkit. That's another talent initiative to provide existing businesses with the best practices for inclusion in the workplace. This toolkit helps employers think about how they reach out to that untapped workforce presently in the Cedar Valley, and this is a collaborative effort. We're able to successfully put this toolkit together by the public and private sector members of the Alliance in Chamber that are committed to this initiative. We just recently signed on with the Technology Association of Iowa's, the Iowa Project. This is initiative to encourage people with information technology skills who may have left Iowa to come back to Iowa, look at the jobs in IT across Iowa, including Waterloo and the Cedar Valley that exists here, as well as changes in the quality of life. The Alliance is part of the conversation to address also workforce transportation and childcare issues in the Cedar Valley. These initiatives are collaborative and require public and private participation. Why is talent, retention and recruitment and retention so important to us is, from the companies I mentioned earlier that we were targeting throughout the Midwest and met with, seven out of eight of those external prospects I met with since December stated workforce availability was a hindrance to their expansion at their present location and knew it had to be an issue elsewhere, too. So that's what they wanted to talk about before they talked about brick-and-mortar sites and buildings and sites. From the Industry Insight Report that we'll be sharing with you, 62% of the existing businesses say they recruit talent from outside the Cedar Valley. 26% say they find childcare, transportation, employment barriers for the workforce they want to attract and retain. Further, 48% of our existing businesses express that workforce is a limiting factor to their growth in the Cedar Valley. On the upside, 56% of our existing businesses see their business growth as their future. So there's an immediate opportunity and a long-term opportunity of making those expansions happen here in Waterloo versus elsewhere in the state of Iowa or elsewhere in the United States. Talent recruitment and retention is really our lead-in with our ability to add new investment in Waterloo and Cedar Valley, in the Cedar Valley from our existing businesses and our ability to recruit new companies, as you can see. As you see us engage in more collaborative initiatives in the Cedar Valley around talent, you'll better understand why this area is a focus for the Alliance in Chamber, and we're hoping it will continue to also be a focus for the city of Waterloo and the rest of the Cedar Valley, too. Leave the update right there if you want to ask questions, or we can leave those to the end.
Wait till the end.
We'll wait till the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Wes James. I'm with Cedar Valley Tech Works, and I'm happy to be able to give you a high-level presentation update on some of the progress we've had in the last few months at Tech Works. It's been overall a really positive last few years with some baby steps, but continuing in the right direction, so if our trend continues, we're looking forward to some really exciting things in the next three years. Updates in the recent history, we've got, first, we're continuing to improve our building and facility. We have added security cameras, so we've got those online now to provide a little more security and access control for our tenants. We're continuing to expand existing tenants. The University of Northern Iowa Metal Casting Center's additive manufacturing center is actually expanding their footprint, taking over the rest of First Floor. We're in the process of finalizing leases. They're moving into the space. They'll be adding an additional 5,700 square feet of leased space to their existing footprint, and they've already begun to set up and uncrate and set in over a million dollars' worth of new additive manufacturing and robotic equipment in that space. We have a brand-new tenant that has joined us in the building, Productive Resources. They're a company from Springfield, Illinois. They provide design and engineering support services. They've got a small footprint today with a formal lease, but that's their phase one. More important than the size of their footprint is the progress they've made in setting up their value proposition to some of the local supply chain. They have actually been working with a local manufacturer to set up a direct connection between their onsite IT computer design facilities at Tech Works and the manufacturer's in-house firewall. So that's a huge value proposition plus for Tech Works that we're excited to continue to pursue. That new tenant, Productive Resources, has also expressed that they're excited, they're hopeful to execute their option on the remainder of third-floor office space this month, so that will add another 5,200 square feet to their footprint. And I guess, lastly, but maybe the most exciting, we have a UNI additive manufacturing center student who's graduating this May, and he is starting a, or trying to start up a very beginning 3D additive manufacturing printing business. He's trying to find his niche. He's working with the Business and Community Services folks. We're partnering with them to hold his hand and kind of help him get a chance, and he's occupied a lab space on the third floor in what's kind of another new outreach for us and our value prop. So it's, and I'll talk another 40 minutes if you let me, but I'll get out of the way and say thank you, and if you have any questions, look forward to you reaching out. Thanks.
And Wes is right, he could talk another 40 minutes if allowed. So, I'm Carrie Dara with the Alliance in Chamber. Also, I've been up here many times, so thank you for having us and able to share an update with you. As Lisa and Bob and Wes have already indicated, we've had a lot of momentum, we've had a lot of activity going on. We did host focus groups last month, which many of you participated in, 120 people, residents, investors, business leaders participated in those focus groups. We got some of the best information that we could have ever hoped for, and we are putting together results from the focus group that will be shared with the GCVA Board tomorrow, but I will get those results to you for your review, too, so that you know both what you participated in and what some of our goals will be as a result of those focus groups. But essentially, it was information that we weren't shocked with. It actually was affirming that the direction we were going and needing to narrow our focus a bit was exactly what we knew was going to be important for us to do with your help and with your input, so that will be part of what we share. Essentially, between the community development and the economic development, the Alliance in Chamber is the connective tissue between all of the organizations, all of the communities in the metro area, especially in the community development side, the countywide when it comes to economic development, and then regionally when it comes to business recruitment. Those are the areas that we know that we can play a big part in helping our partners. So focusing our mission, being a collaborative partner, we know we can't own everything. We can be a catalyst, and we can be a supporter in endeavors that are successful and pointed in the right direction. We need to support those groups, other economic development organizations that are already in the area that we can connect with and collaborate with and have exponential benefit throughout. In communication, we know we need to lead with the champion cheerleading voice of all the successes, all the good things going on in the Cedar Valley, specifically Waterloo when it comes to sharing information that comes from City Hall and throughout the other organizations in Waterloo. That's what we're here for, that's what we want to do, and that's what we know we can do for you. And then our organizational structure is another area that we know is important with any organization. You need to take a look at the structure, make sure it's the most efficient method that you can host, and we're in the process of doing that as well. Those of us that are involved are really excited. We know from the focus groups that after people were able to share some of their concerns, the majority of those focus group conversations were very exciting. They had lots of energy about the things that we should be doing and can be doing, and so we recognize that our partnership with you and our partnership with others is the most important thing that we can bring to the table and strengthen those. So, thank you for your support. We know that we'll be together on many items moving forward, but it makes a big difference when we have good relationships with the people that we serve. So, thank you very much. But we do have time for questions, if you have that of me or anybody that has been up here.
Yeah. I was in one of those focus groups.
Thank you.
Yeah. It was great. I was glad that people were as open and honest as they were. If there is a weakness or a consistent theme, is that you don't need to own anything, everything. You need to give credit to other people. You need to work collaboratively with other groups that can add so much to the entire product, and I'm very hopeful with you in charge right now and with Bob and a great board that you will do that, but I can't stress enough that that was a recurring theme that needs to be implemented.
And we heard that loud and clear, and actually, we've got the most collaborative team that are used to working with people, and Lisa with her region partners, and Wes has really been the conduit to bring people into not only the Tech Works, but the Cedar Valley from the innovation side of things with their regional innovation network. So, we believe that, too, and you are working with a team that has collaboration in their blood, so appreciate you pointing it out, and we know that you are part of the process that's going to make this a success, so, thank you.
May I ask one more question, because I'm sometimes a little fuzzy on what it is when Lisa was saying that you were taking credit or saying that you were a part of bringing all these jobs to town. Tysons, what specifically did the Alliance do to help with that project?
Sure.
I don't know if we were taking credit, but we certainly supported the city staff with necessary applications for state incentives. When the project materialized, the state of Iowa received an application from Tyson Corporation from the corporate headquarters, and they reached out to us and asked us if we could help them finish putting together an application for incentives from the state of Iowa. So immediately, we reached out to Noel Anderson and Adrian to let them know about this project, and from there out, we just collaborated. We dotted the i's and crossed the t's. We sent a staff member down to the IEDA board meeting to support the project if they had any questions, and that's how we've supported them, that particular project.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Amos. This one is maybe for you also, Lisa. One of the things that you talked about was, from a standpoint of retention of business in the community as far as Waterloo, is there a process or something in place that you guys use to try and keep businesses in this community, keep them from one to other communities, like Cedar Falls or, let's say, Hudson, any place like that? Is there a process that the Alliance has in place to try and retain a business here in Waterloo?
Yes. If the project comes to us first, what we like to do is counsel the business and encourage that they expand in the city they are. They are already in. That includes talking with city officials and discussing the project parameters and giving them a shout-out to the project. We, as the Alliance in Chamber and predecessor organization, our first priority is to get the company to stay in the community they're already at and expand there. If that isn't possible, then we try to keep them in the Cedar Valley area versus going outside the Cedar Valley, somewhere else in the state or outside the state of Iowa.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Lisa and/or Carrie, question I have is, you guys probably are coming up for renewal of agreement with the city, I expect, and usually when we have these, I've been accustomed to having some handouts, so I could look at progress and different kinds of things, and I don't see anything here with this. I was expecting maybe something good handed out. Is that an oversight, or is that something that you're going to present when it comes up for council vote, or?
Well, in the past, we provided these semi-annual reports, both in writing and with our verbal reports. This is step one, when we submit the invoice, then we also have an itemized of how many prospect visits we've had, how many projects we've worked with the city of Waterloo on, and other initiatives under talent and government, et cetera. We can provide you any type of report you would like, but historically, we've been providing that, and that's been sufficient. We're open to anything, anything you'd want to see, and any additional information that's certainly on the table.
So that will be coming up, Lisa, then, when the vote on renewal is coming up? I take it?
Correct. I don't offhand know what the timetable is, and maybe Noel can give you an indication of that.
Okay. And the second thing that I had, Lisa and/or Carrie, what is Chamber Alliance doing relative to the situation with people returning from incarceration that need to get a job? I know that we discussed in the past, Ban the Box, what I refer to as a Fair Chance Act. Is there anything, any initiatives that the Chamber is undertaking in order to get these persons restored, back acclimated, back into the community, getting them employed so the recidivistic rate is not as high as it would be if they had, or if they had a job or unable to find a job?
What we've been doing is, Iowa Workforce Development has been doing a lot of things related to this, and I believe their director has visited every single prison in Iowa, so we've been following their lead in a collaborative effort. If there was any area along that line, we can support Iowa Workforce Development's efforts, we certainly are.
And as a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, with the initiative about the Fair Chance Act, or other people refer to as Ban the Box, I know that in the past, we talked about this being a voluntary kind of removal of that box from the application form. Has that been discussed any further, that there at least be a voluntary attempt to get businesses to take that off?
We haven't discussed it since Steve Dust talked about it some time ago at one of these previous sessions.
Okay.
That's probably something that we need to bring back up again.
Okay.
I'll just speak to that a little also. We did bring that up to our businesses about Ban the Box, and we had several businesses that were interested in that, but their insurance companies would not allow them. So I think there's another step that needs to be addressed before we get to Ban the Box, and I think it's something we need to bring up to Workforce Development. I'm sure they've been made aware of it, but we need to make sure the insurance industry is going to support these employers that allow that part of the Ban the Box piece to be taken off, so that's something we're prepared to talk about also. That's fairly recent.
And you would have a list of the insurance companies that are expressing concerns about that?
I don't have a list. I just have specific businesses who ran that idea past their insurance company, and it was not allowed.
Okay.
So we needed to make sure that they are asking the right question, but that is an issue. I think there's another step involved before we can be successful at that total initiative.
Okay. Thanks.
I just have a couple of quick ones. I think, Lisa, I hope I wrote this down correctly, that you reached out to 964 companies, and out of that, it generated eight leads? Was that, did I catch that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that pretty typical?
I know it sounds like a lot of companies to reach and to get that kind of response, but it is typical. It really is. I mean, those companies were targeted based on the, targeted industries for the city of Waterloo, so you're dealing with almost 1,000 companies that you don't know if they're interested in expanding or what's on their mind for expansion, so it really is any more typical of getting us. As you could see in your report, over 300 man-hours, if you will, was spent just trying to get indication from these companies of whether they're interested in expanding, for one, two, whether they would expand elsewhere than their current location, and three, would they consider the Cedar Valley in those plans.
Where is that report?
It was sent electronically ahead of this meeting. We can resend it again if you'd like.
Okay, then resend it up to council.
And just a follow-up to that, so when you're talking to some of these companies, what is probably the easiest selling point for Waterloo, and what is probably the hardest selling point?
You know, the easiest selling point is because of our proximity in the upper Midwest, we find. There really isn't any hard selling point about Waterloo. It's all good. Some of the companies, or of the eight that I mentioned, they were very familiar with Waterloo, and Cedar Falls usually citing Waterloo because it's the larger of the city and more recognized. So it's all been on the upside, positive comments and opinions of the city of Waterloo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? We want to thank you all.
Mayor, if I could just close real quickly. Thank you for having us, and just want to congratulate our staff, who has, Lisa's been with us for a long time, Carrie as well, Jim and Wes and others. Our team is really doing great things, and one of the things that hopefully you'll see as the City Council and Mayor as well, is our participation in your City Council meetings, supporting and being vocal for the business community and being present. And so we've got a staff that's willing to do that, and as they do, then that energizes our membership base to participate as well, and as I think we'd all be committed to, is the better, more participation, the better. So, just want to voice our stepped-up game and commitment to that as being present and supporting you all in the jobs that you have to do.
All right, and thank you for all your diligence and your efforts. We've traveled across the state, we've seen some milestones and some great things happening locally in our community, and you have all been there, so we thank you so much. Thank you.
Motion of adjourn?
Second.
Most have been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We adjourn.
Meeting the Finance Committee together? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of May 7, 2018 is proposed.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hey, I would entertain someone taking the travel request, please.
Madam Chairperson, travel request for today. Aircraft rescue and firefighting employees Rusty Z., Randy Shepard, Troy Deeds, Chris Preston to attend live aircraft fire hot burn training provided by the University of Missouri. Destination is Dubuque Jet Center, Dubuque, Iowa, September 27, 28, mountain, not to exceed $1,500. Keith Gaspary, Director of Aviation, amended Spring 2018 Spring Conference, Iowa Public Airport Association, IPAA, in Des Moines. Dates are April 25th through 27th, not to exceed $497.04. Thirdly, Abraham Funtjes Jr., Executive Director. Rebecca Johnson, Human Rights Specialist. Shelley Birch, Administration Secretary, to attend the EEOC FEPA Conference, which is the Equal Opportunity, or I should say Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, Federal Employment Partnership Agency Conference, in San Antonio, Texas, June 25th to the 29th, not to exceed $4,102.70. Investigator Mullenbruck to attend the CTK Interview and Interrogation School in Waterloo, May 14th through the 16th, not to exceed $395. Investigator Sad to attend the Cellular Analysis Survey Team, CAST, in Omaha, Nebraska, June 25th through 28th, not to exceed $723.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hey, preauthorization to approve anything over $1,000?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I'd like to make the following motions to approve. First is the airport, mountainous shipping handling of $8,000 for the lease of mowing equipment for the Waterloo Regional Airport. Next is
Next is Culture and Arts Department with mountainous main shipping handling, one thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents for the copy machine equipment, annual overage counts uh, from four twenty seventeen, four twenty eighteen. Uh, next is the garage, a mountainous main shipping handling, three thousand five dollars and fifty-two cents for six nozzle kits for the street department loader. Next is from Leisure Services, mountainous main shipping handling, not to exceed six thousand dollars for labor costs only to replace the charcoal-colored pavers in Jefferson Street between the north and south blocks of Riverloop Expo. Next is Planning Department with the mountainous main shipping handling, twenty-two thousand six hundred fifty dollars for tree removal at Chamberlain Site, lot at three twelve Gable, lot at North Barkley and Adams and in the Edwards slash Logan and Utica Street area. Next is the Police Department with mountainous main shipping handling, one thousand fifty dollars for crash data recovery system, annual maintenance renewal. Next is the Sewer Department with mountainous main shipping handling, two thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety cents plus three hundred dollars shipping handing, handling for outdoor heated safety shower with eye wash for magnesium hydroxide building. Next is the Traffic Operations, mountainous main shipping handling of seven thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents for twenty-seven AEL forty-B LED lamps. Next is Traffic Operations with mountainous main shipping handling, two thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars for one thousand five hundred feet of fourteen slash twelve stranded IMSA cable, one thousand feet of fourteen dash seven stranded IMSA cable, one thousand five hundred feet stranded IMSA cable, and five hundred feet of fourteen dash three stranded IMSA cable. And finally, is the Traffic Operations with mountainous and estimated shipping and handling of fifty-five thousand nine hundred sixty dollars plus one hundred and fifty dollars shipping and handling for eight Intelite TS two-one ATC controllers, including Max Time and Max Adaptive Firmware and Max View License.
Very good. Second? I do have just two quick questions. Uh, Mr. Schinkel, on number seven, the overage on the copy machine, are you about ready to look at a new contract there or is that pretty close to what you normally experience?
Ken Schinkel, Cultural and Arts.
Break the equipment, for Pete's sake.
There, there is an overage and that is typical.
Yeah.
And actually, you want some overage because you pay your base number of copies, whether you use them or not. So, and we try to be a little bit conservative in that estimate. Um, it wa- it has been increasing and so, um, you know, we are making adjustments for that. And we are in, we're two years left on this contract and we are looking at possibilities for consolidating with other departments, if that's possible.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's always a tricky game. I appreciate that, so thank you very much. And Mr. Hudding, I have a question for you on number nine. Is it just the charcoal-colored pavers that we're having trouble with?
Yes, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We're working with engineering on this, but um, for some reason, the charcoal, there, it's a bad batch. Other cities have had them fail as well. So, I, I wanna recognize Rittlin Kaper because they've gone to bat to get the bricks free, so the bricks are at no cost. The labor may be at no cost. We're still debating that, but I wanted to get this done before the John Deere one-hundred-year event. So, we're covered now. There's probably a fifty-fifty chance that there will be no cost.
That's interesting. Thank you very much.
But yes, it's, it's just the charcoal. They're a bad batch.
Thank you. Here we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna ask for help from Mr. Jacobs, since Mr. Morrissey did such yeoman service on the one before. Can you take the um, items to be amended? Thank you.
Budget-lined items to be amended tonight. To approve the project budget amendment for the methamphetamine drug hotspots grant to budget for additional revenue to be received and related expenses in the amount of four thousand dollars as submitted by the Police Department. Also, to approve the budget amendment to use road use tax fund balance for additional expenses anticipated to be spent on bridge projects in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand as submitted by Finance. Approve the budget amendment to add revenue received that exceeds the original budget and spend additional funds received in the amount of nine thousand three hundred dollars as submitted by Traffic Operations. Approve the budget amendment to use two thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars from the contingency account to budget for additional expenses for Housing Vouchers Program as submitted by the Housing Authority. And lastly, to approve the budget amendment to use cash balance amount of seven thousand dollars to pay for the boiler repairs not anticipated in the original budget for Ridgeway Towers as submitted by the Housing Authority.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I will take the other committee business. Um, request permission to dispose of scrap items in the back lot of the Public Works Building. Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we make a motion to approve the, the bills on the bill payment voucher for May the fourteenth, including the amount of three million nine hundred dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Wow, I get to use the gavel. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to our, this evening's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schimpf?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, right now, I'd ask that you join me uh, in a moment of silence. Um, uh, if you would please rise, or you can sit, it's your choice. Hats off if it serves. All right, thank you. Uh, we will be led in a pledge by Ward Three Councilmember, Patrick Morrissey. Please join me in the pledge, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. I was so anxious.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed in the minutes of the May seventeenth meeting.
May seventh. May seventh. Duly noted. All right, so we got, we have that motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Uh, first, I would ask that Mr. Abraham Funchess join me up front and whoever else you may want to come up as well.
Sure, I think we have uh, Human Rights Commissioners on the audience, along with the MLK. Uh, Sever Bear, please have a go.
All right, good evening, everyone. City of Waterloo proclamation. Whereas the Waterloo Commission on Human Rights exists to protect the personal dignity of Waterloo citizens and help remove barriers, prevent, preventing individuals and groups from achieving their full production capabilities. And whereas the Waterloo Human Rights Commission utilizes various educational mechanisms to broaden awareness and understanding among our Waterloo citizenry to help us all more fully understand and appreciate our great diversity, including those on the margins, women, LGBTQIA, folks, uh, workers, immigrants, and disabled and the sick. And whereas the Commission is already engaged in an MLK fifty initiative to highlight the great work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his and many other efforts to bring people of all backgrounds together to help transform the political, economic, and moral structures of our society. And whereas we, the staff and commissioners of the Waterloo Human Rights, fully embrace the relaunch of the Poor People's Campaign, which was launched on Mother's Day, two thousand eighteen, in an effort to effectuate positive change in our communities and make the Cedar Valley strong. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Quentin Hart, do hereby proclaim May thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, as the relaunch of the Poor People's Campaign.
All right.
Well, we certainly appreciate this, Mayor, City Council. Uh, present with us, of course, is our Chair, Eric Denard, as well as our Vice Chair, Inkele Levy, and then other members of the MLK fifty committee. Uh, but we're excited about this because we believe that the Poor People's Campaign, which is something that Dr. King was working on before he died, uh, was working to fight for economic justice for the poor in our nation. And right now, the data show that there are about a hundred and forty million poor people in this nation. Um, and they're disconnected from vibrant economy. And we want to be a part of the change that hopefully helps alleviate uh, this, this drastic problem all around the, all around the globe. But uh, we are continuing to fight against systemic racism, uh, the war economy, poverty itself, environmental devastation, and just a distorted morality. So, we hope that we can uh, do something that will change that for the better.
And I think the quote is injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So, the efforts, the commemoration, the continuation of putting forth ideas and initiatives that will change the reality of people is absolutely important. So, I thank you. I thank everyone uh, on the Commission and those that are involved in the MLK fifty, to the, to the trails to honor our civil rights history. We thank you so much and uh, we are on board to help and support in any way that we can as you continue to move this community forward. Is there any other comments from anyone? All right, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I would like to call up Eric Thorson at this moment.
All right, um, I'd like to, uh, the other day during our department head meeting, um, we gave a, well, I gave and everybody kinda looked at me crazy, but uh, that happens from time to times. But we, you know, we were um, thanking Eric uh, for all of his support and I've kinda thought about um, maybe before some of your time when uh, Chicago Bulls played the Utah Jazz and Michael Jordan had the ball and he went left and he went right. And then Brian Russell kinda flew by him and he kinda tugged him to the side and he hit that jumper and then he stood on his tiptoes uh, after the shot went in. You know, that's kinda how I think about Eric Thorson's uh, um, all that he's done for the city of Waterloo. Uh, when you talk about a man that spent his entire lifetime working on behalf of citizens, um, you spent an entire lifetime, you know, trying to advance this community, move this community forward. And he's sat in the back a lot. Uh, I can't say it's the most, uh, you know, uh, job where you get the most recognition for it, but I'm gonna tell you, this man right here is a quality individual. I've heard people say um, a- as of late, that there are more projects going on, street projects that are going on right now in the city of Waterloo. No matter where you go, from east side to west side to north side to the south side, we see great progress happening in our community. And Eric and his leadership and his staff has played a significant role in making sure that we tap into the potential of what we have uh, in our community. So, Eric is retiring, but if you remember that shot by Jordan, they won that championship, he can be proud that this city is moving forward at one of the greatest paces we have. So, Eric, this, this plaque uh, is presented to you in appreciation of your service, dedication, and loyalty in serving the citizens of Waterloo as city engineer. And I just wanna say to you and your lovely wife, God bless you and thank you for everything that you've done for all of us in this community. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, everyone. If you'll just indulge me for just a minute or two, since this is my last meeting. I'd first of all, like to thank the President, Mayor, and Council and all the past mayors and councils for giving me the opportunity to serve the city and do what I went to college for and what I was trained for and really what I wanted to do for my whole career so far. So, and in my hometown, no less. So, thank you very much for that. I'd like to thank uh, all the current engineering staff members and the past staff members that have worked for me and the consultants that have worked for me. You've all made my job easier. And those are really the folks that uh, get it done day in and day out. It's not me. It's all those staff people that really work hard for this city. So, thank you all very much. And I'd like to thank the citizens for keeping us on our toes over the years. Um, that always keeps us busy. And uh, let's see, I'm forgetting somebody here. Oh, I wanna thank all the current and past department heads I've worked for and all the city staff. There's some really great people working for the city of Waterloo and they all work hard and help make this a great community, so thank you all. And finally, I'd like to thank my wife Judy for putting up with me for all these years and uh, giving me up every Monday night for council meetings. It's really gonna be different to be home on Monday nights. Well, home all the time now, I guess. At least for a while, anyway, so uh, thank you, Judy. And uh, you know, Waterloo's a great city, so don't let anyone ever try to convince you anything otherwise. It's a, it's a wonderful community. Thank you.
All right, um, all right, it is time for oral presentations right now. And uh, first up on the um, dockets, we have Laura Stambler, Marketing and Development Coordinator for the Center for Arts. So, Laura, where are you?
Hi, my name is Laura Stambler. Like you said, I'm with the Waterloo Center for the Arts. And I just wanted to invite all of you and everyone in our community uh, to our first Riverloop Rhythms Concert this Friday, featuring the band Tropicante from five-thirty to nine-thirty at the Riverloop Amphitheater. We have a great lineup this summer. Uh, concerts are free, thanks to the following community sponsors. Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau, US Bank, Topaco Community Credit Union, Signs and Designs, Beecher Field Walker, Morris Hoffman and Johnson, P.C., Iowa Public Radio, and Community Bank and Trust. Uh, we are also very excited to offer a new Cinema on the Cedar series this summer, thanks to a generous gift from the Blackhot County Gaming Association. Cinema on the Cedar is presented by Community Bank and Trust and will feature free, outdoor, family-friendly movies at the Riverloop Amphitheater, uh, starting on June twenty-second. For a complete schedule of our concerts, movies, classes, exhibits, and events happening at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, as well as the Riverloop Downtown Waterloo, uh, you can visit our website, waterlucenterforthearts.org, and follow us on social media. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Laura. All right, is there? Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items? Yes, sir.
Charles Pearson, Seventeen Fifty Flower Street. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the, the council and everybody else that gave me that award at the Preservation Awards Bank. So, thank you very much for that. Uh, second, um, this Saturday's gonna be the seventieth anniversary of the strike at Rath Packing Company. So, what we wanna do to honor that, we're gonna do a bus tour this Fri- So what we want to do to honor that, we're going to do a bus tour this Friday of Wrath Packing Company. I don't know if any of y'all know Jim Day. Jim Day is going to be like the host, he's going to kind of do the thing. But another big piece is, when we had that Civil Rights Awards banquet at the rec center, a lot of the Waterloo community school kids didn't get a chance to go to that. So that Friday afternoon, we're going to do a makeup to the kids at East High School from 1:30 to 2:30, and Jerome, yeah, Jerome's going to be there in behalf of the city. Another thing is, the boxcar is kind of like the only African-American historic resource when it comes to tourism that we got in the city, and it's in terrible shape. Actually, y'all might have to put tape around it because it's such bad shape, you don't even want nobody there. But I think if the city works with me, there's an opportunity to get some funding to restore it, revitalize it, landscape it, make it look nice. And then last, the MLK Nature Trail, some great things is being discussed about the nature trail going from East High School to East Fourth Street. But another conversation came up to maybe do a sculpture of Martin Luther King, Coretta Scott King, Anne Mae Williams, some type of sculpture, because next year's going to be the, I want to say the 60th anniversary of King's first visit to Iowa. And at the award ceremony next year, we thought that'd be a good gesture to maybe think on those types of lines, especially when it comes to the state of Iowa and civil rights and tourism. So that's my little piece.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks for the update, and congratulations as well, well deserved. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda-related items?
Hi Mayor, hi Council. I got one thing to say. You know, we stand up and we say a pledge that leads to the flag. For all the vets and all the men and women that are over there are fighting for our freedom, I'd appreciate it if you would instruct them to remove their headgear, please. That's a pet peeve with me, and there's one or two around here that don't remove their headgear, and I'd appreciate it if you would instruct them. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. I thought I did say that at the beginning, but I will absolutely make sure we continue in that way. And Jim, just before you sit down, Jim Chapman at, address?
224 Birch.
Huh?
224 Birch.
224 Birch. Okay. Sorry about that. Is there anyone else going a second time?
David Dyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I was out to the grass and branch recycle the other day, and noticed there's a lot of nice, large boulders lining the entire area out there. And I know that the city is short of money, short of staff, et cetera. I just wonder who it would be that was the nice person that donated all those rocks, cleaned them all up, set them all.
All right. So is that a, oh, you're trying to say it's a good, it's a?
It looks okay, but was it a want or a need? And did we pay for it? Because I never saw any tracks going off through the mud or anything like that, that they were needed out there. And if we bought those and paid to set them, we're always short of budget money, we're always short of staff, but we had time to do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dyer. Yes, ma'am.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. It was a want, but it did not cost us anything.
All right, thank you Sandy.
Fantastic. I like that kind of want.
Right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Charles Pearson for organizing the bus tour for the Civil Rights Trail this coming week here. To do that, we had to have some sponsors, so I want to recognize them and thank them. University Avenue Dairy Queen made it happen, as well as Two Scoops Ice Cream, which is downtown here. And the last sponsor we had to help make the bus tour happen is George Cooley with CNS Car Company, which is located off of Washington Street. So I want to thank those three business people very much for supporting the Civil Rights Trail and the bus tour.
Absolutely. I forgot, the tour is this Friday? Is it already full? If someone wants to go, can you tell people how they can come and participate?
What we're going to do is at 10 o'clock, we're going to meet at the Waterloo Public Library in the meeting room. If you want to, I'll be there at 9 o'clock actually, so if people want to talk to me. At 10:30, we actually will get on the bus at the Waterloo Public Library and actually head towards Wrath Packing Company. But the tour is going to be a little bit more than just going to Wrath. We're going to go to like St. John's, we're going to go to The Pond, all the different businesses and neighborhoods that was affiliated with Wrath's history. It's kind of like that kind of piece. So 10 o'clock, I'll be there, 10:30 the bus tour, and we'll be back here by 11:45.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Make motion to close public hearings, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The?
Make. I make a motion to receive the consent agenda, place on file, and approve with the addition to A1, the amount of bills in the amount of, see if I can get it right this time, I can see it, $3,964.
Second. All right, that's $3,964. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I was going to request if, would it be possible to take A2 out of the consent agenda and consider it separately?
A2, all right. And then Mr. Schimpf?
I would also ask if we could take item number four separately, and that would be a recommendation of appointment to position of CMOM technician?
All right. So we'll take those off, we'll vote on the other items. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's take, I think Mr. Share is here, too. I want to kind of get through all of these. Let's take A2 first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to leave until, as a conflict of interest has been declared by me, but be, make sure I'm called back in for discussion on the other removed item.
Think about it. We got you, buddy. All right, thanks. Thank you.
I'm planning on abstaining, but I was planning on leaving the room. I guess if you'd like me to, I will.
I just don't know what I'd do without the two of you. I don't, he doesn't want to hear any part of the conversation.
Probably will.
And you did that so we could? So I think we're just going to vote to set the date of hearing today, so, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we made a motion a second, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution setting date of public hearing as May 29, 2018, to prove a lease agreement with Verve, whatever it is, Compacha LLC, for property located at 327 West Third Street, for term ending June 30, 2025, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey abstained. Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt has abstained. Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, number, Mr. Morrissey and Mr. Schmidt.
Probably having some good conversation.
Or not.
Yeah, right.
What'd you do to him?
Yeah, what'd you do with him?
There's the body.
Did you win in one game?
What'd you do to Steve?
He went to the bathroom?
Yeah.
All right, we will take up number four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four is a recommendation of appointment of Kerry Lewis from the Civil Services List to the position of CMOM technician at the Waste Management Department effective May 15, 2018.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Councilman?
Can we just, can we get some overview on this position, a little bit? Possible?
Steve Holmbraker, Waste Management Services Director. This, of course, is a budgeted position. We followed the protocol of going for the Personnel Rec Committee, received approval, went through the civil service process. We did have two applicants on the list, and we followed up with an interview with both applicants and felt Ms. Kerry Lewis, who actually does work for us now, as the most qualified person. And I guess to talk a little bit more about the position, we've always had two budgeted CMOM positions since its inception. We've made some minor changes, kind of changing the one position, which resulted in a little bit of a savings reduction to the program. In the long run, it's felt that from my point of view, that we need both of these positions to maintain compliance with our CMOM program, which is Capacity Management and Operation Maintenance, of our sanitary and storm sewer system. And, you know, failure to kid all the tasks done, which this position will be a key component of making sure all that gets done, and if we have certain SSOs, et cetera, we can be subject to a $200 a day fine, escalating up to $1,000 a day in the future.
So this position works with the consent decree, it works with SSOs, it works with the things that we listed in the consent decree that we actually have to get accomplished.
Correct.
This deals with reporting as well that we need to do, you know, yearly or whatever it is, but this helps us comply with our consent decree and move our plant forward, right?
Absolutely.
I think that's what he was asking.
And then just to that, so what was her current position with waste management?
Clerk, too.
Clerk, okay. So I assume we'll be filling that position here in the near future.
If you approve that tonight, that will be my next step.
And how is this paid?
Out of the sanitary sewer fund.
$5.25.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have Kerry Lewis in the audience today, I believe. Kerry, are you out there? Kerry, congratulations. We look forward to continuation of working together and in your expanded role. So we expect nothing but the best, and we know we'll get that from you. So thank you so much. And I think we have another gent sitting in the back as well. If you would please stand, sir, Donald Share. Donald has been appointed to the Community Development Board, so we look forward to working with you as well and going to the board meetings, doing all the great stuff that our volunteers do, and thank you so much for your commitment. So thank you, sir. Number two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2019, sidewalk inspection and repair program Zone 8.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the sidewalk inspection program Zone 8?
We did receive a comment at the clerk's office. Dwayne Baker of 482 Devonshire wanted to come, oh, excuse me, Barker of 482 Devonshire, wanted to comment that he is in opposition to the sidewalk construction.
Barker, are you here this evening? Mr. Barker? All right, so Wayne, we'll get you the contact information for Mr. Barker. Yes, sir.
David Dyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Fortunately, I don't have any sidewalks on my property, but I think it would be nice if when we have these sidewalk things, it tells us where Zone 8 is, or a map in, on the website, on the city website that shows the different zones, so people know whether they're affected or not. I've heard some comments from different people that, and maybe it's there, but how do you find it?
You want to tell him how to find it?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer, is on the website under the Engineering Department, and it's generally bounded by Williston, Baltimore, Ridgeway, over to Highway 63.
Okay, okay. So just go to the engineering portion of it. Is it also somewhere? We may need to figure out if there's a tab or location, especially during this time where we can have it in once we get through, so we can talk about it.
I'm Robert Meisnikowski, 449 Kingbard Boulevard. I did send in a letter to the council, but I guess it didn't make it in time for the meeting, but it went in last week. But I've got a complaint about the request to repair my sidewalks. 10 years ago, I replaced my sidewalks because of tree damage, and now I got another request from the city to repair my sidewalks for tree damage and the same thing. And when we did that last request, we had the Forestry Department come out and examine the roots, and they said, no, it's okay, go ahead, pour your sidewalks. And, you know, I have pictures that can go with the letter, you know, that I feel that I am being, having to pay for a city tree that we've asked repeatedly for them to remove, and every time they come out, they don't want to remove it.
Okay. Have you spoken with the Engineering Department yet, or Mr.?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Mr. Castle is right there, and as soon as we finish this hearing portion and get through this one, he'll take, and you guys can go and talk about it. So thank you so much for coming here this evening, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed repairs to sidewalk.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution, adopting proposed resolution of necessity as proposed or amended.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion and receive and file approved publication notice of public hearing on the traffic adaptive signals on Highway 218 and San Marner Drive and fiber-optic telecommunications upgrade project number STP-A-8155 (743) 86-07.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Just really quickly, can you tell the general audience what this is? It's a really cool project.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director.
Sandy's speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry. I don't want him, okay. Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. This is a gr- This is a grant, mainly a grant that we have received. This will take the, excuse me, the traffic adaptive signal control technology will be installed, like in a big loop. It'll go West Eleventh to two eighteen, San Marne Drive, back to two eighteen to Hammond. It will include branches on the Port Road and Sarah Drive. It will give us traffic communications on Highway two eighteen from West Sixth Street to San Marne Drive, on San Marne to Kimball, then back to West Eleventh, and then back to West Sixth Street. This will also include fiber, so it will give us a connection on a loop throughout the city. And also, it's a traffic adaptive system where it will control traffic according to, should we say, I'm trying to think. I don't want to say a population, but as much traffic as there is, it will adapt the signals to keep traffic moving, and the side streets will stay.
And, yeah, activity. So in relation to this traffic adaptive system, would you say that this is cutting edge with regards to other communities? This is a really, really big thing for the city, right?
This is a very big thing for the city. It's gonna have, it's gonna give us fiber in a big loop. So we will connect some of the downtown buildings and also like the fire station out at Crossroads. So it's, it's a really big deal.
Alright, alright, thank you.
And it's federally funded, except for twenty percent, so.
So we probably, because we had some other, other dollars come through. Are we over a million dollars that we've been able to find from outside sources or close to it?
Pretty close.
Okay.
Over the past few years, yes.
Alright, thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor, is there, it's considerably more than what was projected to be the cost for this project? Do we have any kind of idea why we have a higher bid than what was projected?
When we estimate, that's just an estimation of what we came up with before. And it's, it's still covered by the grant. We have extra money from the grant. So we're still getting the same benefit. It's just bids came in a little bit higher. But they were very close.
Alright, alright, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive bids opened by IDOT, Iowa Department of Transportation, on April seventeenth, twenty eighteen, and direct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The first bidder was Price Industrial Electric Incorporated of Robbins, Iowa. Their bid amount was five hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Second bidder was KNW Electric of Cedar Falls, Iowa. Their bid amount was five hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to award the bid to Price Industrial Electric Incorporated of Robbins, Iowa, in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number four is a resolution approving designation of revenue earned from police department citations by holding revenue in an account used as police revenue in the budget year two years following receipt of said funds, assigning use of said revenue for property tax reduction, and classifying said revenues committed fund balance to the city's financial statements.
Second.
Alright, that motion has been made with the second. Chief? Well, Mr. Schmidt, is your floor? Do you want to talk about it?
Well, the reason I brought this up, you know, during the previous year or two, we talked about putting in red traffic lights, red camera lights, and any revenue from that, because the typical concern from the citizens is that we're just gonna be raising more money, to no benefit to the taxpayers. And so with those proposals, we had talked about putting that money into a fund to be used for property tax relief. So this particular proposal, which again, I compliment Councilman Jacobs for coming up with this idea, seems to me we just got done setting the budget. We've got our budget set. So now we're talking about, I'm hearing anywhere from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional revenue. Given the fact we've already set the budget, seems to me to be logical that we would agree to take this additional revenue, set it aside for the benefit of the taxpayers. You know, as we've talked about gaming, we've talked about a number of different things over the year, going to have a relief for our property taxpayers. But every time we have this revenue, we typically find someplace else to spend it. And I think most of us who are elected to represent the taxpayers, and I just thought that was a logical request.
Alright, thank you. Chief?
Deandrelka, Police Chief. I consider myself a scholar of cause and effect. This was developed over my sixteen years of experience as a police chief. My master's degree is in management with a discipline in organizational behavior. I have a proven track record and know how to appropriately manage a police department, as well as how to lead police officers and garner results. This resolution is detrimental and would actually negatively impact safety in the city of Waterloo by having an adverse impact upon police operations and officer morale. Traffic tickets are written to improve the safety of a community. It just so happens that the residual effect of a traffic ticket is revenue. This resolution puts the emphasis solely upon revenue. In addition, traffic stops conducted by officers can often become contentious. Officers are regularly verbally assaulted in these interactions. These interactions occasionally turn physical. Waterloo police officers pay attention to the actions of this council. The officers are honored to serve our community, and they are proud of their accomplishments over the past several years. However, they also want to see the fruits of their labor directly and expeditiously support the police department's operations. The revenue generated by tickets written by Waterloo police officers already go toward property tax relief and the police budget. This resolution, if passed, puts a $200,000 hole in the police budget. It will negatively impact police morale and actually impede the officer's desire to engage in traffic enforcement. I cannot force police officers to write tickets. Officers in this country are allowed wide latitude in regard to their ability to use discretion. Mandates imposed upon officers to write tickets could easily be likened to a quota. Quotas are specifically prohibited by Iowa Code three twenty-one point four-nine-two A. This code was enacted in the spirit of police officer discretion. Councilperson Jacobs, with regular input from me, has been working on an innovative traffic enforcement ordinance that would enhance the safety of the motoring public in Waterloo. Input has been, has also been sought from members of the police department in the development of this ordinance. If the resolution in front of you is passed, it will have a chilling effect upon the development of and operational implementation of Councilperson Jacobs' proposed ordinance. I ask that you not pass the resolution in front of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I'm not quite sure why you would feel the need to defend yourself, because nothing in this motion has anything to do with you. So sorry about that, if that's what you took it. If I'm not mistaken, when Councilman Jacobs originally came up with this idea, you were opposed to it. For whatever reason, now you're supporting it. My understanding is this is not going to result in any additional tickets. All we're talking about doing is instead of these tickets being dedicated to the funds going to the state, they're gonna come to the city. I never anywhere heard that there were gonna be additional tickets, any pressure was gonna be put on officers to write additional tickets. This whole conversation about quota, don't know where that's coming from. But I'm real sorry to hear that, again, this item's been on the agenda for a while. I never heard from you, never heard from any officers. This was an issue. You are completely blindsiding me on your comments on this. And all I'm looking to do is get some property tax relief for the citizens of Waterloo. Now, if this is gonna have a detrimental effect on your budget, I don't understand how, because this money was going to Des Moines up until my proposal, if I'm not mistaken. So I guess I need some clerk.
There, and I did send a, send an email to correspondence that there were some concerns, even before talking with the chief when I first saw this. But right now, within that budget, there is a certain amount that goes towards revenue generation. Taking that money would increase, increase or take away, I don't know, a hundred and seventy-five to $200,000 that was budgeted in their budgets already. And I did communicate with you that there were some challenges about this, and you indicated, tell the clerk to put it on the agenda.
But what I'm talking about is the additional revenue, which is what Mr. Jacobs' resolution was. I mean, the money that was there is in the budget, that's there. That didn't change with Councilman Jacobs' resolution. What there was was this additional five to $700,000. That's all I'm talking about.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just maybe explain a little bit and maybe propose something. Just to back up for a second, my resolution specifically said, which no one read, that a quota would not be allowed. We are not writing more tickets. Actually, the tickets in my resolution, that the penalty goes down for the folks that receive the tickets. So it's, before we were sending the tickets to the state, the penalty was higher. It's, the cost was reduced, the fine was reduced. And if it was a more, in a more serious indictable offense, it stays as a state ticket. If it's a simpler offense, a non-indictable offense, it would simply come to the city. Because after all, we're, we're the taxpayers are the ones paying for the vehicles and the training and the personnel. So that's kind of what the idea simply was. I think possibly what we may have done is, in the budget process, we may have anticipated, or at least hoped that this would go through. So probably some of that, of that money is probably in the budget. And so could we look at then, maybe marrying both ideas together? So any funds in excess of the amount that's actually in the budget, because we don't want to take away the funds that are already locked and loaded in our chief's budget. But any additional funds that are received, instead of going to the state, that come to the city, could those funds then go to property tax relief, as Councilman Schmidt has proposed? So possibly could we look at amending the resolution as a fair compromise?
I would certainly support that. And again, I would apologize if I missed that part of the conversation, that, yeah, this hundred and fifty to $200,000, I never intended to take that money that you already have in your budget away from you. That was never my intent.
Mr. Mayor.
And we also have, I mean, so we, we, as Mr. Jacobs said, there was a portion that was in there, and we have to walk a fine line between having a conversation about quotas and revenue generated. But we also have about $710,000 in fund balance that we use this year. And I'm not saying go do it for that, but it would be great if there are additional. But we don't know what it is yet. We haven't even been through a year of the municipal portion of it. And that was a current revenue source. When we talk about the, the traffic enforcement cameras and that part of our safety initiative, that could potentially be a new revenue source. This is existing. So we need to walk a fine line right now with what we're doing. So, Mr. Juan.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. I guess I am a little confused. If the resolution had said additional new revenue, that might have clarified it for me. The way I read it, it looked like all revenue that goes to the police department. The second question I have is you talk about putting this money aside for property tax relief. Isn't money that goes to the police department property tax relief? I'm having a little trouble understanding the difference between property tax relief and money that goes towards services that are charged to property taxes. I don't understand.
Based upon how the budget is set, there's a portion in there. And like with every other department that has fees or anything, that portion is used to counteract what their overall budget is. So if a department has a budget of a million dollars, and through fees or whatever it is, they say they'll get $250,000, then that department's budget is really $750,000 when you add in the revenue to that. So that's what that was, that was for, that portion of it. So, yeah, it does hold down.
But the money is still property tax relief, right?
Yep. Mr. Morrissey?
Yep. First of all, when we're doing and paying our bills, we need some flexibility. I see this as tying us into something that we don't need to be tied into. You as the executive officer for the city of Waterloo and the chief financial officer need to have that flexibility to pay the bills. And any overage in this, as in anything in the past, or any unused a portion of a budget goes into the general fund balance, I do believe. And we'd be losing that with this. So I would be opposed to this just on that reason alone, for that reason alone. The flexibility and going to the fund balance. But my further question is, we had this presented to us, and there was no work session on it. And I, you know, there needs to be, rather than just something thrown at us with no actual, I mean, the attachment we got was a repeat of what we have in number four. That's all it was. There was no explanation. There was no discussion on this, which is what I thought that us as a council were supposed to do in a work session. So if we're gonna do anything with this at all, I think there needs to be a work session so we can discuss what this all means, what the end result is of this if it were to pass. Or even if there was to be an amendment, as Mr. Jacobs suggests.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to find it on the budget here, but what, going back to February's meetings, what is the amount that, that we budgeted for FY nineteen as far as revenue for that? Does anyone know, chief, or anybody? I apologize, I'm trying to find it on here, but I have very much luck.
Should be about $220,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Two-twenty. So that, that's the amount that we've budgeted that we thought we were gonna have before we gave different direction last week. So I guess, Mr. Schmidt, would it be acceptable to amend your resolution to basically, any, any funds over $220,000? Is that?
Is that a friendly amendment?
It is friendly.
Sure. I'd welcome that.
So then I would, I would move to amend Mr. Schmidt's resolution to, to make that as monies that are set aside, anything over two-hundred and, we'll say, two-hundred and twenty-five thousand. Right, just to be safe.
Second.
Alright, so that is a motion or a resolution, even with concerns from police department.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, this is to the amendment. Yes, sir.
I would like to hear from our chief financial officer on this as far as her thinking on doing this in any way, shape, or form, and the effect that it would have on our budget, our general fund balance. And it's already been brought up by you, Mr. Mayor, about the $710,000 that we voted in this budget for 2019. So I'd like to hear from the chief financial officer, her thoughts on this.
What do you mean? Like, is there a direct question, instead of thoughts? What, like, is there a direct question?
I'd like to hear her thoughts on this amendment to the resolution that is before us to vote on.
Do you think, does she think it's wise? Give her a direct question, so, does she think this is something we should do? Give her a direct question, so, does, does she think this is something we should do, or something we should not do?
I'm not, I'm, it's an open-ended question, I want to hear her thoughts on it, Mr. Mayor.
I need you to be very specific about it, so the, I, I'm, because you, you're asking her to, to give, to give um, some logic on this. What do you want to know? Do you think this is good financial practice, or not financial practice? Do you think that based upon, I just don't want to put her up on a podium, i- is there any, a specific question? That's all, Mr. Morrissey.
Well, that's exactly why we needed a work session on this, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I, I, I move that this be postponed uh, until a later date, until we've had a work session on this.
We already have an amendment on the floor that we're talking about.
I'm aware of that, and I can make a motion to table at any time.
Call the question.
Or not table, but to postpone.
Call the question. All right, so uh, there is a motion to postpone. Could we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to postpone the amendment. Madam Clerk?
How long are we postponing?
Until a work, until the week after the work session takes place.
Sorry, let me get my minutes in order, real quick. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, thank you. We have the amendment on the floor right now.
Mr. Mayor? I think direct action to bring down our taxes is the way to go. I just do, I, I think it's money that used to go to the state, and we're getting it back. We will start to see it come back to us, and if it is not assigned, it will go the way all city money goes, which it will trickle in here and there, and be devoted to different things, and generally end up with no assignment, and then everyone will wonder what happened to it. I, I like tax relief, always have, always will.
But it's two years from now, and that money goes directly towards the general fund balance, or if there are other areas that our law enforcement needs. So this is property tax relief. So let's, I mean, just with all due respect, this is relief. The, if they wouldn't have placed something in their budget for revenue generation, if it was two hundred and twenty thousand, that is ten cents on the levy. That means that if they wouldn't have had that, that would have gone up by ten cents on our levy. So I, you know, don't want to confuse that as levy. This is an existing revenue source that we're working on. The traffic camera enforcement, that was a new revenue. So to mirror these, you know, to mirror these ordinances are a little bit of a challenge, but um, we'll probably have this come back next week, so. So we have a, we have a, a, a motion or amendment on the floor.
Mr. Schimpf?
That's on the amendment?
Yep.
Correct, yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, so now that, that...
We need to approve the whole thing.
All right. So now we have the motion on the table with the amendment. Madam Clerk?
Can I clarify?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, that is on the, that move over the two hundred and twenty-five thousand and above, it goes for two years now. Uh, number five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A resolution approving a performance evaluation schedule for all city employees.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Mrs. Klein?
That was my resolution, and um, I'm sorry we didn't have a chance to meet and talk over the wording of it, but as I looked at it one more time, it's pretty clear that all it is saying is that we need these evaluations. It doesn't tell people how to perform the evaluations, or what day. It does give a reference of time in, from January first to July first of each year. Um, I don't think that's urgent, I think it's, I think it's perfectly doable. Um, in my background, for ten years, I managed two different departments in the schools that my children attended, and I was responsible for eight employees. And so for that length of time, it was just customary for me to review them every year. Didn't take long. Um, our particular method was that I gave them a sheet of paper a couple of days ahead to fill out. I filled an identical one out, we sat and chatted for fifteen, twenty minutes, and um, I turned the paperwork into the HR department. Not every employee needs to be reviewed by one single person, in my opinion. However, this doesn't get into the micromanaging, it just says that they will be performed. There's a section one that says, "Performance evaluations shall be conducted for all city employees between January first and July first of each year by the applicable supervisor." See, it doesn't micromanage anything. Section two simply addresses the two employees that are hired, and in some cases fired by the city council, which is the city clerk and the city attorney. Um, section two says, "Performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted by all members of the city council between January first and July first of each year. Said employees may request their performance evaluations be conducted in executive session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five." Now, in that section, we still don't get into the micromanaging of telling people how it should be done. The only reason that would ever be held here would be if the employee did not request that it be held in executive session, or if all seven sat in on it. Does not say that that has to be the methodology. It could be that all seven fill out a form, and that the interview is held by perhaps two appointed members. None of this is micromanaging. It simply is tackling a problem that goes back several administrations. People just were not receiving their annual evaluations. And I realize that this administration has begun that process, but I think we have to look at the past to determine how the future has to go. And we have to put it in place so that that can't happen again. We have to know where we are with our employees, and a good discussion about strengths and weaknesses and performance is a good thing.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would agree that evaluations are critical. I, I commend Mr. Dunn and, and the mayor for starting that process. Um, I have two objections to this. Motion is, first is specifying it between January and, and June. I think we need to give the whole twelve months, because especially if you do it on their anniversary, it might be a different time. So that would be one suggestion. The other is, I don't think we should be the ones evaluating the city attorney and, and the city clerk. That, I think, is micromanaging, because the mayor is in charge of the operations. I know we hire, but I think we should hire with um, input uh, from the mayor on the performance. But we're not here on a day-to-day basis, we're not here eight hours a day. We don't know all the different things that those two positions um, perform, and how they perform, and I think we need to leave that up to the mayor. So a resolution saying that we need to have evaluations, I'm all for that. Take out the dates, take out the fact of us doing evaluations for two of those positions.
Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Before I speak?
Yeah, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, Mr. Mayor, what um, the result this proposal seeks? I mean, what is it really that this is after? I, I, I mean, we've had workers working for the city of Waterloo, as long as the city of Waterloo has been incorporated. Uh, those workers work in the best interests of the city, I believe that's why we hire them. So what is it that this resolution seeks as a result, other than what we've already been doing? I'm sort of confounded, befuddled by, by what goes into this resolution. I, I mean, is there going to be a follow-up elaboration of what type of performance evaluation we're gonna have? Not only for the city clerk and the city attorney, but for all city employees? Uh, both non-contractual and contractual employees? Were the unions consulted about this? Why didn't we have a work session on this? Again, this is the second one in a row that's just thrown there, but we don't have a work session to discuss this in a public venue. And that, the fact that we're not having a work session runs counter to what I've heard this council this year talk about, that they wanted more, quote, transparency, and more public input, but yet we're not doing that. We're just throwing this out for a vote tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
The se-
I apologize.
The next thing uh, um, is that, just a, a statement that I, I see this as a resolution to micromanage. Uh, and there is a division of power, a division, a balance of power, that all uh, in our democracy has, both at the federal, the state, and the municipal level. And it involves an executive branch, a legislative branch, and a judicial branch. We're the legislative branch. You and the people that you appoint as your staff, as your department heads, including the city clerk, and including the city attorney, that's the executive part of our government. You run that. That's your job, awesome as it is. You know, by this resolution, it usurps your power. It takes that away from you. You should be the one determining this, not us. And as far as I'm concerned, that if we're gonna pass something like this, usurping your power, then I think we need to look at ourselves. And what's good for, I, this old saying, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So if we're gonna continue with this line of thinking, I think that we need to add a section three, which reads something to this effect. And if people like this, I think I would like to propose it as an amendment. "Inasmuch that the city council members receive tax dollars for their duties as elected officials, annual performance evaluations shall occur between January first and June thirtieth. The performance evaluations shall be conducted by a citizen review board, made up of eleven persons, one chosen by each council person, the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the human services director. The reviews shall be confidential to avoid any appearance of retribution or favoritism." Again, what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Elected officials receive a review every two years. Well, four for the council, two for the mayor. They receive their reviews. And it, it isn't just a little committee, it is the entire ward, and in some cases, the entire city that performs those reviews. Business practices, good business practices, absolutely rely on reviews of employee. It, we have had, the city of Waterloo in the past has had to let people go, and when you come to the employment folder for these people, and you see nothing there, how do you make the case that you need to let them go? Um, aberrations in behavior at work don't just occur in a vacuum. There's usually a pattern of behavior, or um, something like that, that should have been documented well along the way. This is for the future. It, it isn't for now, because I very much admire the fact that you have begun this process, but your predecessors did not do this, and they should have. And there's no guarantee that the people that come after us will do this, and they should. And we will not micromanage by telling how. I agree, perhaps the date should be eliminated in, say, an annual review. That's fine. As far as the reviewing of the attorney and the clerk, we do do the hiring, and I don't know of anyone who hires and has the right to let people go, who doesn't do at least that review. With, with perhaps, I liked your idea, input from the mayor's office, strong input. This is not micromanaging, it's simply setting a policy in place, that these reviews will be done from now on.
Um, what, what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, ask directly to Mrs. Klein, um, I guess I can't give a friendly amendment. I have a, I have a, I have a veto um, put out for this. Not because you and I are in disagreement on this, this item, uh, we've talked about it. We've talked about it for twelve, ten, twelve years, over a decade. Um, I think, I think there's, that's not true. Um, I think there is a, I think there is a way to do it. Um, if you were to say that there was a full, a full um, evaluation process for the entire full-time staff of the city, uh, beginning in July nineteen, um, I would pull this veto away. Um, also-
Are we talking about, you're talking about a process in place?
Oh, yeah, full, full implementation of an evaluation, of an evaluation process in place, uh, July two thousand and nineteen. We will all be here.
Yeah.
We will work through um, what we need to do. Um, right now, um, the, there's some legal challenges right now as well. So if we could come to an agreement on full implementation of a performance evaluation scheduled July two thousand and nineteen, um, and at that time, at that time, uh, by then, every department head will have some type of evaluation, and every, every um, manager will have some type of review, and in July two thousand and nineteen, all city employees would begin that process for a year uh, evaluation.
From July to July?
Um, from, starting July nineteen. So um, I mentioned uh, the employee handbook before, I mentioned uh, bargaining contracts that, based upon contractual things from two thousand and seventeen. Um, so July two thousand and nineteen, the city will, began a full implementation process for any val- a performance evaluation schedule. That include trainings uh, for managers for the new process, that does everything we've been talking about doing for the last decade, uh, and haven't, haven't done yet. So if you could um-
Can I make this into a friendly amendment?
Uh, uh, let me, let me, let me, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Let me, let me continue to communicate, because this is passionate, this is a passion of her, it's a passion of mine as well, and I would assume everybody sitting here as well. Um, but all full-time employees, some departments are already doing it, police and fire are already doing it, that's a large portion. Um, but I would like to put in a, a really strong process. So um, department heads, uh, upper-level management will have theirs done prior, if there's no union contractual things that keep us from that. But full city staff, we have the opportunity coming up to put that into our employee handbook. You will all still be here. I believe, I believe in performance reviews, I had them myself, and you know, how do you take a person to good to great if you don't have some type of process in place?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question about that. Is, is there a specific reason why you choose July? Are we, would we not be ready to go?
That's when the new, next year is when the new contracts begin. We don't have to, we don't have to worry about uh, any um, changing up or making an employee do something that they didn't do with regards to their, their duties. So with regards to some of our union personnel, you can't go in there and tell them to do that, I have an opinion by our attorney already. Um, there's also some things that I would like to um, present with regards to the city attorney and city clerk performance review uh, process as well. There's a way that all seven council members can give their input, but there's also some legal repercussions by the way that we do their process publicly, and it opens us up to things. So um, for instance, um, we talked to other communities around the state, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Dunn had uh, reached out to find out exactly how they do it. Our neighboring city- Our neighboring city council has no input. But I would, I would, I would move towards the mayor, Mayor Potem, and two council members of all of your choosing. So first, all seven council members get an evaluation tool. And we also give it to the city attorney and the city clerk as well. The HR department will tabulate all of the numbers. Council will be able to see those numbers. And then we move to the mayor, Mayor Potem, and two council members will sit down with the city clerk and city attorney, not publicly because we don't, we don't want to talk or discuss, where you get that part. And we, if there's an assistance plan or whatever it is, but we put forth something so that we can start to give them the type of feedback so they can meet council and mayor's expectations as well. But I'm hoping we can meet in there. That process, that process, we, I would, I think we talked about November. I would, I would ask for November, and I can explain that. But I have to explain it to you because I don't want to talk about this publicly because that could be detrimental to the employee we're talking about as well. So I have a process, would like to move forward in that. But if you could, if you could put, there's some language in here. You mentioned two areas. Where's the full, full? Can you, can you go through the two things that you listed within this resolution?
Section one, performance evaluations shall be conducted for all city employees between January 1st and July 1st of each year by the applicable supervisor.
If we could, if we could say July 19, we will began a. Annual performance evaluation process with everything in it that we're talking about, July 19. Now, as far as department heads, they will have their review, and you know, we're working on that. So that would be one part of the process. And then number two, what was the second one?
Second one said, section two, performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted by all members of the city council. Now, keep in mind, those can be written.
Okay.
And handed in to a, a committee that talks to them. So it doesn't have to be public.
Develop, develop, develop the process, so.
Right. This is just a policy. It is not micromanaging.
Well, that's fine. I mean, it, it's, I know you're passionate about this, and, and I am too, and folks are.
And careful.
I'm just asking if we can meet for the full in July 2019? And as far as the, the department heads, yes. And as far as managers that are not impacted via contracts, those managers will have those done over the course of that time.
I see nothing wrong with that. It gets us past the bargaining unit.
Yeah.
Time and. Would you like to make an amendment?
Kelly, do you know how to do what we just? Yes, sir.
Can't we just postpone this indefinitely until something gets worked out? I, I mean, this is another example of why we should be having a work session on this to discuss this.
I know. We, we will start to have work sessions.
Not get into the weeds.
I think, I think I'm hearing a compromise of something that we're already moving towards.
Can we just have an amendment that says we will have annual evaluations by July 2019?
Beginning July 2019.
Beginning.
Our contract, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would offer that as a friendly amendment, but I think you have to strike all of the above then, right? And Pat would know maybe more how that works. You strike the original and replace it with a, an amendment to have an employee evaluation process in place for implementation beginning July 1st, 2019.
Mr. Mayor?
She still has a floor, sir.
Well, she was asking me a question, Mr. Mayor.
I was asking, or whoever's got the answer to that. I'm not sure how to make that amendment to put in the language I just stated and remove the language that Mrs. Klein had in there. I just asked a question. And maybe Mrs., our city clerk maybe knows the answer.
Yeah, he's asked like 12 minutes ago.
But I still got my question, honey.
Mr. Mayor, then on Mrs. Klein's resolution here, I would move to make the amendment that should read, section one, performance evaluations shall be conducted for all city employees annually, beginning July 1st, 2019. Is that?
But that's my question. Don't you have to take out the other language?
I don't think so because I'm just amending section one, right, Kelly?
Well, but when you amend it, then you have just section one, you still have the original amendment, uh. Language there.
So how about you just say, I want to strike section one to read?
I want to strike section one to read what I just read into the record. Does that work?
That's awesome.
Okay. And then I would like to strike section two, right? Strike section two to read, an amended to read, performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted by all members of the city council annually, beginning July 1st, 2019. Said employees may request the performance evaluations be conducted in executive session pursuant to Iowa code.
That part, leave that off of there because that's not legal. Because they, yeah, they have to request it, and you can't do a person's employee.
Then I retract that last sentence.
So if you just went all, and then with those.
Mr. Mayor?
This is really confusing.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to make a motion to postpone this until after we have had a work session, please.
So you have a motion. You did what?
I still need a second on my amendment.
So you need, he needs a second on his amendment.
I second it.
So you got a motion to second on his amendment. Mr. Morrissey would like to.
Hold on. I need to get the amendment down in the minutes so that we can all understand what it's, what it says, too. If you can allow me that real quick. So can you read what you want to, want section two to say one more time, please?
So section two, performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted annually by members of the city council.
Including me. And HR director.
Including ma- mayor and HR director, beginning July 1st, 2019.
Mr. Morrissey, you got it, Kelly?
I think so.
So there's a motion to postpone.
Well, she's seconded mine.
So we got a motion, so she's seconded yours, but he made a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
We can postpone this until we've had a work session to discuss this, work out the details.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion to second to postpone. Any questions about the postponement?
Okay. Say that again, so Morrissey and Amos. To postpone.
I have a question, but it's not necessarily.
Until.
It's about the whole.
Until after the work session.
We have to go to the postponement, then we'll come to you.
Till the week after the work session occurs.
So we have a motion to postpone for a week? Oh, a week after the work session.
Okay. Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Certainly, yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Schmidt, on about the amendment.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the, the comment about the legality of maybe some of what we're doing here. So I think this is, is purely about performance reviews. I, I didn't hear anything mentioned about job descriptions or anything like that, that you and I have also talked about over the years, too. So I just want to make sure that, that we're clear there. And then I guess my question would be maybe directed to Mr. Dunn. Given the fact that we are approaching the end of a contract term, wouldn't it be beneficial to have this in place and out of the conversation prior to having that? You know, for myself and, and everybody I know in the, the private sector, I mean, they're just, they're baffled that the city of Waterloo doesn't have, I mean, they can't believe that we don't have performance reviews. It's like, who's been running the show here? And that's no reference on you, Mr. Mayor. But how do we ever get to this place? And so from your perspective on a bargaining position or a issue of discussion, wouldn't it be better to have this already in place before we get to that, is my question?
Lance Dunn, Human Resource Director. It's a contractual situation. We have contracts already set in place. So it would be not, we actually cannot have something set in place for contracted employees.
I apologize. I apologize. We're having a little sidebar here. Could you start over? I missed the first part of that.
No, I said, we have contracted employees, so, and we have a contract, and that contract is from 2016 to 2019. So any of those employees, we, that's a negotiable item if it's not already in the contract. That's why it's, it probably would best be done after the contract is over. We cannot implement that during the contract session from 2016 to 2019. So to answer your question, no, it wouldn't be wise to set something in place now because we aren't in contract right now.
But, but as far as working on it and getting that in place, we can do that.
And have something ready, but.
Put that into the employee handbook, so that's why.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, my understanding of the process has always been that if any of us council have a particular problem, not just with the department head, or with a particular employee, we are expected, and this is through League of Cities and different seminars, webinars, and that, that, that are part of being on the council and gaining knowledge, is that we are to go to you and to pass that information on to you as the boss of the department head, who then filters that down to the respective employees, if not you going directly to the department head to talk to them about the problems that there are. Again, to me, this is a slap in the face to Kelly Falke and to Dave Zellifer. We have no business as city council evaluating anybody. You are the member, you are the boss, you are the executive director of the city of Waterloo and all the employees that are underneath you. And I find this appalling, that we would try to inject ourselves into your part of governance of this city, where we have no place of being. We already have in set in, in the standards that we are to go by, a procedure that we are to take complaints to regarding any employee or any department head. I, I totally oppose to this amendment. It has no place, I believe, in city government. If there's an issue needs to be addressed, I would hope that you would veto this out of hand and then exert your duties as executive officer of the city of Waterloo.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I just want you to know how proud I am of you and of Mr. Dunn for initiating these. It's been a long time coming, and you recognized it, and you began it. My whole reason for doing this very broad-based policy in writing kind of thing is because we do not know the character and caliber of the people that will follow you. And we need it in place, and you guys are the leaders that can lead us to this. And, and look at what we've accomplished here. I see your point of view, and you see my reasoning. To me, that's the best way to work.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm in favor of employee reviews, and given time to initiate the process is fine, and then this will live beyond me. Just Mr. Schimpf on the, the motion for the city attorney and city clerk just to be able to work to create that process with council that, that, because every day, there's, they do more than just agendas and answering a couple of questions at the council meeting. So being able to create that process where you get council's input, absolutely would love to have that part in there, so.
Which I, I put that in there, right?
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat that, the second, number two, the second part?
I'll read the amendment. This is pretty good. I'll read the amendment as I have it. To strike section one, to read, all performance reviews shall take place annually, beginning July 1, 2019. And to strike section two, to read, performance evaluations for the city clerk and city attorney shall be conducted annually by members of the city council, mayor, and HR director, beginning July 1, 2019.
Can we put the mayor in that as well?
The mayor's in there.
Did you say the mayor and council and HR?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
The portion, the portion about the. The portion about the. The reviews, section one, that's covered by our charter, right? Who does the performance reviews for staff? That's covered by our charter.
What do you mean by charter?
Our charter wouldn't cover performance reviews.
It wouldn't. So who does this portion?
The appropriate administrators.
Well, we, 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 we scratched that, so.
Take it back in.
You can, at the mayor's discretion. And then that way I get with HR, get with whatever, for just that first part of it.
So it shouldn't, so section one should read on my proposed amendment that Mrs. Klein seconded. Performance evaluations shall be conducted for all city employees annually, beginning July 1, 2019, by the applicable supervisor? Is that how you want it?
Okay. I've got, strike, section one, to read, all performance reviews shall be conducted for all employees annually, beginning July 1, 2019, by the applicable supervisor. And section two is still the same.
Can I still have your second on that, Mrs. Klein?
Yes, you do.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Just a quick question. So what I'm hearing here is, is this resolution is not going to take effect until July 1, 2019. That's what I'm hearing.
But I'm, I'm going to do, I'm going to continue.
Right, yeah.
That's true, but I'm going to.
You're going to be continuing to work on it, I understand that, but the implementation of it is what I.
Beginning July 2019.
So are we voting?
Mr. Schmidt? Oh, we're voting on the amendment.
And the amendment replaces?
Yep.
Or what?
The amendment.
We'll do the amendment, then we'll vote for it, like we just did on the last one.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Now we come back and vote on it. But we just amended.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. We haven't even got started yet. Let's get to business. Mr. Mayor? Number three? I'd take number six. I'd love to. I think I beat you. Number six is adopting a resolution approving a request by Hope M. Anderson for the preliminary plat of 129.16 acres for the Paradise Estates addition located next to 5805 Kimball Avenue, between Kimball Avenue and Highway 21 and north of East Orange Road, to allow for the development of 209 residential lots and nine land tracts for the subdivision. Second. All right. That motion's been made with the second. We have some speakers up. First, we have Mrs. Henning, or Barbara Henning, Ms. Henning, if you're around.
She's right there.
Good evening. Barbara Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive, mayor, city council, Orange neighbors, and all present and watching on TV. I've been hearing a lot of. and all present and watching on TV. I've been hearing a lot about the importance of history as it relates to our city. I would like to look back upon some events and resources that I consider to be relevant to Orange Township and our community. I am fortunate to have plats dating from 1869. Then I got at the courthouse, a copy of the Rural Society, Rural Social Survey of Orange Township, Black Hawk County, from 1918, from Iowa State University, and a book written by Ida Snively on Orange Township folklore, which is very interesting. And I'm most proud of my May 1920 Popular Mechanics magazine. And in this magazine, it talks about Orange Township. Now, this is May 1920, and I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but it actually has pictures, and it's entitled "A Unique Country Community." Five miles from Waterloo, Iowa, is a unique country community. It boasts probably as fine a country church and school as can be found anywhere in the United States, as well as an unusual number of modern country homes. Instead of moving to the city, as is the case for most retired farmers, they have erected fine homes on small acreages out here in the open country. And there are now about a dozen of these modern homes scattered along the roadside between the school and the church. Let it be said, it is in no sense in the world is this a village. There is not a single store or any kind of, in the vicinity. The farmers had taken up their residence here simply to be able to enjoy rural life with the added advantage of a fine church and school at home." Then it goes on to talk about the school, and the church, and all that kind of stuff. When I talked, read in the Rural Survey of Orange Township, it had the plat from 1910. And in this, I thought it was very interesting, that 28% of the housing, the farms had names. And it happens that Section 15, which Paradise Estates is located in, had a farm named Pleasant Hill. And I grew up on a farm, so I have a strong farm background. And my parents have several farms. And it's interesting to note, they don't, didn't give them names, but even though my parents owned this land for a long time, it was never called the Marshall Farm, their additional farms. It was the Schroeder Farm, or the Pagel Farm. And where they lived was called the Home Place. So I propose that Mr. Anderson honor the Orange Township heritage by naming the housing developments and its streets to something in the agricultural community. With a 97 CSR, it has strong roots in the farm industry. Now, I know it's tricky to name streets, but I would respectfully, respectfully suggest that Mermaid Cove does not have any association with Waterloo, Iowa. Perhaps Horseshoe Lane would be a more apt name. I'm bothered by Summer Place, since Summerland Edition is located approximately two miles away. And Wall Street is named after a wall in New York City, which was 12-foot high to protect people from the pirates. Adeline was the original name of Orange Township, and there's no record of why that was changed. Calvin was on a map until 1954, as this was an address so that mail could be delivered to that community, because they didn't want to call it Orange, because there was already Orange City. So Buzz has said he wants this development to be his legacy. Perhaps that could be part of a street name, or something with a farm background. Or the early settlers, in 1869, Mr. The Goods lived there. In 1887 to 1926, it was the Millers. In 1939, it was Martin. In 1956, it was Weber. And then back in 1966, it was Martin again. So, I know that the developer has the chance to name the community. But once those houses are sold, it is no longer the developer's land. It is the, becoming part of the community. So, once it is put into housing, it will be part of the community. Please work within the neighborhood so that whatever happens, it's a win-win situation. Let us work this out together. It seems to me like maybe Paradise Estates could have a work session, and then we wouldn't be here taking up all your time. So, one thing I will note is the turnover rate on Kimball has been increasing. There are three for sale signs on Kimball Avenue in that community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Mr. Henning. You, so who is the lady? Because we have a process that we follow, and your name was second on the list.
Oh, the mayor murdered.
No, we're gonna go in order that we have it on this list, because I don't want it to come back at the next meeting that someone says that I didn't follow protocol. So, come on up here so I can look into your eyes. How are you tonight, Mr. Henning?
I am fine. The last handout, you are too. I'm gonna speak for this one. Probably one, first and foremost.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mike Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight to follow up again and talk and provide you with some data for the decisions that you're about to make related to the preliminary plat. Again, my subject matter is safety. Since the last time we met, there's been two studies that have been completed. We'll talk about the first page. You can tear it off and put it next to the second one, because they do relate. I want to thank very much Sandy Greco and Mohammed Ilahi for their assistance. The city did one study for us, and the Orange Neighbors hired a traffic engineer to do the second study. The first page is a line of site study. We talked about what is the visibility from the school? Does it meet minimum specifications? Or does it meet for sight in both directions, depending upon which way you're turning, from both the Orange School exit and from the exit of the Paradise Boulevard? Any questions on, on what you're looking at? I want to note that you see some yellow arrows on there. That is the sight lines that do meet the minimum distance at all times and don't have any conflicting issues. And Mohammed, if I'm in left field on something here, correct me, okay? The important part is the red line on here, which is turning south from the Paradise Boulevard's exit. This was done by Larry, Larry Burns, traffic engineer. He did the study, and he found out that yes, in fact, that does meet the minimum when we did the study in late April. There was no grass, there was nothing on the ground, the snow had just gone away, but it was cold. We had our coats on when we were out there watching him do the study. And he found that in the, if the grass out there gets taller than six inches, we probably don't meet that. And you can see in the picture right now, it's about 10 inches, or it was Friday. It's a lot taller than that now, because you're looking across, you can see the red arrow goes across a lot of grass. It's on the city right away. The bigger concern to me is the other issue, which is the maximum sight distance, is only 50 feet more. You can see my notes, how far is 50, 50 feet? Well, 34 mile an hour. Traverses that much space in one second. If you take a look at the second sheet, this relates to the Traffic City Study that was done by Sandy and Mohammed and their people, where they put a, the two red squares is where they put a, is it a laser, Mohammed? Okay, at the north, and another one down near Orange Road. And these are all Mohammed's notes on here, his handwriting. And if you look at the south point, the northbound traffic is going 34 miles an hour. So from a safety standpoint, you're only ahead in one second. That's cutting it pretty close, in my mind, to what we need to do. So that's the concern there. Also, during the wintertime, this is a drift area in front of that house, because the road is cut down in, and six inches of snow, or you run a snowplow through there, and you are not meeting the minimum sight distance. That's per code. Second sheet talks about speeds and directions. You can see the north point, traffic is moving 52, 53 mile an hour. The average annual daily traffic flow is 2,990 vehicles. And that's about 1,260 more than, than is in your preliminary plat document. So that's a fair amount of traffic. Also, the AM peak period is 8 to 9 a.m., both at the north point and the south point. But at the north point, the PM peak is from 3 to 4 p.m. That's when school's letting out. And that's a critical time. I hope that the Fairgram Traffic Study, when that gets turned in, has included that time slot in their study. The south point, you can see traffic coming from the south, north and south, it's about 34 mile an hour. And again, the average annual daily traffic flow is about 268 vehicles more than is in the document. So there's a fair amount of traffic there. It's not a ton, but it's, it's still more than was in the, in the document. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Now we have Mrs. Mary Margaret Halverson.
Mary Margaret Halverson, 178 Side Hill Drive. I wanted to address the traffic study as well, because I think that everyone could agree upon the concern related to the safety around Orange School and the students. I mean, I believe the city council cares. I know that the neighbors care, and I think our community cares. And I would like, after I present, Fairgram to answer, you know, do they have their traffic study?
Yeah, just address me, and then we'll, we'll work from there.
Oh, okay. I would ask for you to ask. Is that what I do? That, does Fairgram have a study? The other question I would like clarified is, what date and what time in the day was the study done? We did see Fairgram trucks around 4:30 to 6:00 on some days in the evening. The critical times are student drop-offs in the morning, which Mr. Henning addressed, student pickups between 3:00 and 4:00. The conversations all related to that, that's the relevant times. Anything outside of that really is not relevant. The other thing is, does that study done by Fairgram address the north, the hill north of the school? So my point being, you know, if those things aren't addressed, then it truly is unfortunately a sham. But perhaps they are addressed. I believe that they probably did what was necessary. But if they did not address those points that you guys were so clear on being concerned about, then I think that that study's missed the point. Okay? My second point is, we're gonna have a new development. And, you know, I just say, let's make it a great one if we're gonna have that around Orange School. And as a human resource professional, the best indication of future behavior or successes is usually based on past behavior and success. So I just bring up the points of concern that I have here respectfully. But there are some properties that I believe are owned by Mr. Anderson, one being on West Fourth and Fletcher, across from the Burns Park, Irvine Golf Course, and it's in very bad condition.
I would probably advise you, Mrs. Halverson, to stay focused. We don't want to get up on the podium and say something that...
Is not correct.
Well, not correct, or, you know, if it's a great development, we don't want to bring another person down when we can work together to do something incredible. So I understand your, your concerns.
And I hear you too. And that is a concern for me to even bring it up. But my concern is, there are some properties that perhaps are not in the best condition that they should be, and I'm hoping that our new development will be in good condition. But the best indicator of the future is what you've seen in the past. And that's my concern with some of those properties that are currently owned. And I don't want to be destructive, but I'm just trying to bring up some facts. There are a couple other properties as well. And I guess that is a concern to me, because this neighborhood is gonna be a new neighborhood in our city, and I want us to be proud of it. And I don't want it to be half-baked and unkempt.
Well, I think we're gonna have 250, 300, something upward homes. So we're, we're, you know, I can't speak for the council, they still have to vote. And of course, they have their minds of their own. But I would, thus far, what I've seen, I don't get that from this project, but I don't vote. But I do care about what we place in the neighborhoods of our community.
Sure. And I'm sure you do. And I'm confident you do. But that, when I see certain things, then it makes me concerned about what the future development would be. And I want it to be good, too. But, you know, so do you not say anything, or do you go ahead and bring it out? And I guess, in that same vein, I'll, I'll hit the name topic again. They mean a lot. They either attract or deter interest. And I, I am concerned whether the name of Paradise Estate and roads like Mermaid Cove, or Paradise Boulevard, Rhapsody Lane, Elvis Parkway, Dynasty Drive, Summer Place, Moonlight Ridge, if those are gonna be negatives, I don't want it to be. I want it to be a positive thing. And I would just encourage the developers to revisit the names and be open to names, and that the staff that Mr. Anderson employs, I think he wants it to be successful. If they think that those might be corny and not appealing, that they would be honest with him. It's just a thought.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak with some questions about this project? If you would please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Hart and Council. My name is Ryan Wicks. I'm with Fairgram Engineering Environmental. We are the design consultant, working with Mr. Anderson and his team. I'm here tonight filling in for Alex Bauer, who's our project manager. He wasn't, wasn't able to attend, but I do know some background here. I know tonight, in front of you is a request for approval of a preliminary plat. You know, as you were aware, this is a process that basically confirms the city's understanding and agreement in the concept of the development, and allows the developer to proceed into design, where some of these answers, specifically safety answers, can be addressed a little more fuller. To date, the process has gone through rezoning from A1 to R1. The developer has met with the city, has gone through P and Z, has taken input from the neighboring residents, considered those items, and really has put together a preliminary plat here. That's going to be 200-plus lots for single-family housing. They do feel it's gonna be a positive for the area, for the community. From our side, not only traffic safety, but stormwater management, proper utilities, water sewer, those are all things that we've, as a design team, dive in deeper, once the city has concurred with the concept here. So we're more than happy to address questions from the council. I know staff has reviewed this and provided their recommendations for approval of the preliminary plat. And I know Buzz's team, there's a few others here who can speak on the economic impact, the need for housing and those things. So I can try to address questions from the engineering surveying side. I know we have a few other people who can speak on the other items.
Well, yeah, because, you know, there's some, there's some, some themes I've heard over the course of time. She did ask a question about some type of study. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Looking at it, there's been some work done with the city's staff as far as reviewing traffic. The neighborhood has hired a consultant to do some site information.
Line of site study.
Our staff has started some work with this study. Final submittal of that full study, traffic impact study from our side is due with the final plat there. We would have to go into design plans and getting those submitted for city review also. And that, again, is part of it. There's a lot of investment to move this project forward. And then investments typically not made until the preliminary plat's been approved. So the developer has a level of comfort they can make that investment.
So there was a line of site study done. And I don't know if this is for Mohammed, or maybe you can answer this, sir. The line of site study, did it show that there was any site problems?
That's what, and I forget the gentleman's name, I mentioned earlier.
Oh, Mr. Henning.
Mr. Henning, yeah. Where the minimum sites were met there, there were some conditions with possible snow or grass growth that would impact that. Without looking into full design, whether grading or adjustments to the intersections could improve that. There are some recommendations for moving speed limit signs further north on the road, and looking at speed limits, and even a speed study.
Right.
So those are some items that would be evaluated further. So those are some items that would be evaluated further.
So one is to make sure you cut the grass. No, seriously, seriously. It's ten, 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 you know, ten inches, you have to keep it down to six, so that's one. Mohammed, with regards to the line of sight, are there any suggestions that you have moving blinkers, or is there something you can answer for that?
Mohammed Elahi, traffic engineer. For line of sight, as you mentioned, keeping down, mowing down that grass below six inches, or if they could design the side of the street that meets Kimball, raise it maybe a foot or something, if that's possible, just elevate that so you don't have that problem. The lights will be relocated as part of a different, not having to do anything with the site distance, but to give drivers advanced warning earlier, so as they approach the school.
So would that be towards the south or to the north?
Towards the north.
And that's where Mr. Henning had mentioned the north, or someone had mentioned something to the north, so you'll move to give earlier warning, you'll move it further to the north?
Yes, you go farther north, almost close to where the new driveway would be, just south of there.
Okay, okay, so that will give people advance notice. But were they, with the study that was done so far, did the speeds exceed what they were supposed to, or were they in a general range?
With eighty-fifth percentile speed, that's the speed that eighty-fifth percent of people drive at or below, was at the range expected.
Okay.
The speed limit of forty-five miles per hour, you expect people go five to ten miles above that speed. So we had fifty-two and fifty-three, and on the south side, speed limit is thirty, and people, eighty-fifth percent was thirty-four miles per hour, so that was right.
So that's with that, so we'll give them earlier warning potentially. I got a question for the chief. Chief, is there any way that we could help out a little bit more? I know it's within the range, but just another further precaution?
We hope to be acquiring some photo enforcement equipment that we could put in the area.
Okay, so we'll be able to monitor and maybe hinder some of that as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I got a letter here too, from the school district, dated today from Dr. Lindeman and Board President Shane McNally. It says, Dear Kelly and City Council members, on behalf of Waterloo Schools, we would like to take a moment to comment on the proposed land development known as Paradise Estates. Since the building was built, we have mentioned and adapted entrance and exit procedures for those who opt to pick up their children on-site. With the proposal of Paradise Estates, we have heard additional concerns about parking on Kimball Avenue and confusion at the exit. The purpose of this letter is to communicate with the Waterloo City Council that we have already modified our entrance and exit protocols at Orange Elementary. We have approved several modifications to signage, including painting on the road at the point of exit, which will provide clarity about the process. We expect to complete these modifications by June first, two thousand and eighteen. And this is the first, I hadn't seen this, so I wanted to read that today. So I think you may have some other folks that want to speak, maybe?
Yes, I believe so.
All right.
Thank you.
Don't go around, don't leave.
I'm going to mix it up a little bit because I'm an outsider, so I'm Jay Iverson, and I run the State Home Builders Association, and I would say all the communities that we serve...
We need an address, sir.
Oh, Ankeny, Iowa, three-nine-one-seven Northwest Seasons Court, Ankeny, Iowa.
All right, thank you.
So I do have a little connectivity here, though. I mean, my grandparents lived on Mulberry, and my dad's in East High grad, he was a river rat, and my grandpa worked at raft packing, brought home buckets of blood for catfish bait, all that stuff. I grew up in Cedar Rapids.
Hungry, hungry.
But I would just highly encourage you just to, don't make this more difficult than it needs to be, run with this. I mean, there are a lot shortages all over the place, throughout the country, and, like I said, in other parts of Iowa. I looked up some numbers, just because I'm an Ankeny resident, this is not a real fair comparison, but it is apples to apples, so Ankeny's about fifty-eight thousand population, Waterloo roughly sixty-seven thousand, whatever.
Seventy-one.
Okay.
It's growing.
Two thousand seventeen, single-family building permits, I show three-oh-four. So Ankeny, where I live, two thousand seventeen, twelve-hundred-and-seven out of twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-seven building permits as a whole. So that community doesn't worry about traffic, make roads happen, don't worry about water issues, make diversion kinds of issues. I don't know, any questions for me, but I would just say, run with it. It's an awesome addition, I think, you know, a sign of healthy economic development, not only it's the jobs, but, you know, a good housing market, and so I think it's an exciting development, so you can figure out the names and all of that later, but anyway.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? You can't go again, ma'am.
Tim Hurley, nineteen thirty-three Crab Apple Lane, and I'm just standing up to urge your approval of the preliminary plat. It's, does, I mean, seventy-one thousand, is that official, mayor?
That is, that is a chamber Mayor Hart number.
Okay. Last week I heard, anyway. We're right here, folks, and I think you know it, you can feel it, the good things that are happening in this community all around. And I also would say, don't make it more complicated than this, strike on it. It's what you've talked about and struggled with for years and months. We need housing, and we're trying to attract all kinds of people, and they're going to come for other reasons, and they're going to want that kind of housing near a school of that quality, and I'd like to weight off my shoulders, as I'm sure all of you do, a little bit in sharing that tax-based load. I do, however, empathize. I have empathy with the good people, the great citizens, the legacy folks of the Orange Township, in just this manner. My wife and I have lived at our address on Crab Apple for twenty years. Probably fifteen or sixteen of those years, our view south was gorgeous. It was a horizon, it was farmland. Being in Iowa, and we were right there. In fact, some October mornings or evenings after we went to bed in those early years, it was like Close Encounters of the Third Kind with the lights coming at us from the harvesting. That's how close we were. And four years ago or so, I think it's August and sixth, I'm not sure, but there are now a different view, and we don't have that farmland right up to our... But you know what? Different view, yes, but new neighbors, new friends, new streets, new possibilities. I have every confidence, I would say this, for the eight years I sat on this side of the podium, I don't think in those eight years I experienced two-hundred-and-nine residential lots in all eight of those years. Not sure about that, but I remember years when it was twelve. So it's a great thing, and I urge you to proceed with it, and I have every confidence in this staff that they will work with the neighborhood, with the developer, and make sure everything is safe and good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Todd Obadall, one-twenty-four Amity Drive. I would, I'm still in support of this development here, however, expressed previously that the concern is for safety, especially around Orange School. I am concerned with the conversation tonight where we don't have proper line of sight, and the maximum line of sight is only fifty feet greater than the minimum line of sight, and things like length of grass and snow might affect that line of sight. We live in Iowa, we need to be concerned about snowfall and how that will affect safety, especially during the school year when children go to school when it's snowing. Ankeny and Waterloo are apples and oranges. Ankeny is Ankeny, Waterloo is Waterloo. We need to deal with Waterloo issues as they are here. I do not appreciate safety being diminished, that we should just go ahead and not worry about lines of sight, not worry about water runoff, not worry about all these things, and let's just get the ball rolling. The citizens of the Orange neighborhood are concerned about this development being bulldozed through them without their input and without it doing right, without it being done right. We should take the time to make sure we do this right. It was brought up that perhaps that road should be elevated afoot, and that would alleviate the problems. Well, let's get that into the plans. Let's do that. Let's take these suggestions for these solutions and implement them instead of saying, we don't need to worry about this, let's just do it the way we do it in Ankeny. I live in Waterloo. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm John Ruff, I live at one-oh-three Ivanhoe Road. I've sat here and listened with interest what both sides have had to say. As a builder myself of some hundred-and-twenty homes, and working in neighborhoods not out in Orange, I can guarantee you that the people over on the east side of Waterloo, where Lincoln School used to be, had the same concerns that you have, and it's the environment, and it is the fact that they worry about their kids. Just one week ago, I was in Austin, Texas, walking my seven-year-old granddaughter to school, which is two blocks away, and you know, that whole place had real control over the traffic, and that's exactly what these people are asking for. I've talked to Bob, and I know that these developers want to do that, and I'm really pleased to see two sides coming up here and talking with some level of civility, because that's what it's going to take to get this. Now, as far as needing the homes, we absolutely need the homes. I've been on what they call the Grow Committee, well, you would know, what, twelve years or thirteen, and we have always had the school board behind us, we've always had the neighborhoods behind us, but they have concerns. Those concerns need to be addressed. Doesn't mean that we stop the development, it means they need to be addressed. So I guess I would encourage you to make sure that it's a level playing field, that everyone in Orange Township, and I remember the days when that was a high school by itself, because I went to West High, and I think about that, you were very proud of Orange Township, and they should be, and there's a lot of farming community people out there. But that doesn't mean we can't join together, and that's what I'm hoping this will turn into. So wherever you are in Waterloo, it's going to be the same thing. Now, I'm sure that you didn't want to see two former mayors and an existing mayor talk to you tonight, so I'm going to close this with a story that's a true story. I'd been in office eight years. A woman asked me from a crowd we were speaking to, what's it like being mayor? What are your feelings? And I said, well, I can tell you this. If my doctor told me I had one year to live, I'd want to live them as mayor, because they've been the longest eight years of my life. I empathize with you because you have to face all of these problems, but we're all citizens of Waterloo, so let's find a common goal, and let's make it successful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't even know what to say. So, and you know, one of the interesting things, you can come forth, ma'am, if you have some comments. One of the interesting parts, there were concerns about the bus portion and pickup, and then the school sent over a letter today to talk about some of the changes that were going to be made or have been made. There was also some concerns about water pressure, and where's Matt at? What? Oh, he didn't show up tonight, huh? So they have reprioritized and added, this study is part of what they're doing, so through conversation, through advocacy, there's been some compromise about meeting at a certain place to address these, the line of sight, and then earlier notice with regards to travelers coming by having the light, the line of sight, all those things. So this has produced some good feedback that folks could use, so yes, ma'am.
Monique Walters, fifty-four-oh-four Kimball Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank Mike Henning, even though he said it was neighbors, I think it was Mike, for organizing the traffic study and the results that he presented tonight. I thank him for that, because safety has been a big issue. With the safety, first point would be, I would ask again that the council take time to study not only that traffic study, but when the developer presents their traffic study, to really discern on that traffic study and make a knowledgeable and prudent decision that builds consensus to favor everyone's interest in regards to safety. Second thing, it's been talked about people living in their homes for a certain amount of years, this and that, and it's just a home. My family, I'll say it again, my family farms adjacent, both on the east side and north of the proposed development, and that family, that farm, farms, have been there more than a hundred years. So it's not just a house, it's a farm, it's a tradition. We value that tradition. So we take it very personal, especially the residents of Orange, they've been there for a long time also. It is a community. It's not just putting a house on a piece of land and then calling it good. They live there for a reason, so that's all I'll say on that. The other point I'd like to ask about is the tracks of the preliminary plat that are run adjacent to Highway twenty-one. Those originally were C, were Zone C1, and of course, now it's all been rezoned as R1CZ, but those tracks are still there, and they're not platted out as anything, anything really. So I would want to know what the intention is for that, and I would ask, I'm asking the city, has that been a request of the city to the developer to leave those tracks as-is for future development and possibly rezoning it again for commercial property? Or, and I guess, I would ask the developer, did the city request that those original tracks remain unplatted as R1 for potential development of commercial? The other thing I would like to ask is of Councilman Jacobs. Is he going to abstain again from this vote, and if so, why? Thank you.
All right, the rezoning?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We did not ask that the tracks remain there. They did leave that in the design of the original preliminary plat that they had put forth. I think there's a number of tracks out there, some of them for stormwater areas, but there are two, I believe it's E and F, along Highway twenty-one, which are larger tracks. We've seen those in other subdivisions, such as Summer Land, where they put a condo type set up there with, with this current zoning, they could go with one or two family homes if they went to put a condo set up in those. We did not ask for them to remain, that was up to their design parameters.
All right, and...
Good evening. My name is Garland Angov, one-forty-four Windsor Drive, and I'm just calling, here Buzz was out of town, he's had a commitment for over a year ago that he's out of town, but I just wanted to come up and thank you all for all that you've done and listening to both sides and their concerns. I know that Buzz is very concerned about the traffic and the safety of the community, and if... And if it suggested that the road be, uh, raised afoot, I'm sure that's something he will do. And, uh, so on Buzz's behalf, I'd just like to thank you again and, um, hope that you vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I thought nobody was gonna comment. I think that, you know, everybody up at this council supports this development. I think the folks in Orange Township, uh, even the folks that were initially opposed to it have somewhat come around and, uh, are supportive again of the development. I think the, the primary concern is safety. There's also concern about water runoff and I think the water pressure issue's been, been resolved. But I guess the concern I have, I went out there and took a tour with some of the neighbors, I know some of the other council members did too. And, uh, the concern I guess I've got is, is almost as much with the schools as with the city on this traffic issue, because it just doesn't seem like the parking, especially at the beginning of the school day and the end of the school day, has been adequately addressed. And I think the concern is to get that addressed beforehand rather than afterwards, because afterwards may never come. Um, I know I was shown a picture when I took the tour of, I believe it was Highland School that was the, uh, school building that was used as the model for this one, I believe. And, uh, that, uh, building, because of the lay of the land and how it was set up, had a lane that the buses could come in that didn't go right in and out of, right at the front of the school, like it does it at, uh, Orange. Well, apparently that, that's not an option there now because of the way the land's laid out. So something needs to be addressed, I think. And, and I don't know if, if, uh, it's something that needs to be in conjunction with the city and the schools, but if, if you go out there, uh, the bus lanes, they go in and out the opposite direction of what all of us that are Americans are used to driving unless something's changed. But they seem to be driving the European fashion that they go in the opposite way that what we would all do and they, so you're, you're going against buses that are coming right at you. And I think they did that to try and address this issue. So I don't know if the schools in conjunction with Mr. Anderson, because I do believe Mr. Anderson is concerned about getting this done in the right way. Uh, I think he'd be willing to get into some kind of negotiation to get some of those issues resolved. But it'd be a whole lot easier to get those resolved now than after the fact.
I know. What does, we just, the meeting with the schools, what is...
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, yes. We had a meeting with the schools and they are making some improvements in terms of the, the markings of where the buses come in and out. Essentially, the buses come in on the northerly access point, go around to the east side or backside of the school to get the kids and then they come back out that same point. The parents, uh, picking up or dropping off, which lasts about twelve to nineteen minutes on average, according to the Waterloo Community Schools, uh, twice a day. Um, they, they are to come in on the south end and then go out that north end. But they are basically in the process, they've been putting out cones or painting and, and making some other further delineations there to make it very clear which ones are the bus lanes versus the car lanes.
And if I'm not mistaken, this, uh, what's the attendance right now, you know?
At, at Orange? Um, I think it's six hundred.
Four hundred and ninety-six.
I was gonna say...
Okay. Uh, they can go up to six fifty.
Right. Well, and that was my point, is I think it, they're anticipating a twenty percent grow. So I mean, all it's gonna do is get more, uh, of an issue rather than less. And it just seems like there's not enough parking there. Again, if you've been out there in the morning or the evening, there are cars parked all over that neighborhood, just because they have no place else to park. And those parked cars is where some little kid's gonna come running out and get killed. And, um, a- and again, I think that's all anybody's concerned about. We're not, I don't think anybody's opposed to the development, they just like to do it, uh, with as much foresight as possible.
According to our meeting with the Waterloo schools, and I'm not quoting them, but paraphrasing, I guess, is that, uh, you would probably see similar traffic congestion at every single school in every single community for twelve to nineteen minutes in the morning and afternoon.
Traffic flows is not equal parking.
I was asked to answer traffic flows.
Mr. Many, uh, you've already spoken ma'am, that's in for five minutes, so...
I got another three though, don't I?
No, no ma'am. You would, um...
Someone needs to ask a fairgram that with the school.
I, um... Fair, so the schools, um, indicate that, um, when they drop, when they drop kids off and picks kids up, you're talking about twelve minutes max, um, at that point. Ma'am, listen, okay? So everybody's been patient and listened and asked their questions. You know, with all due respect, you know, the waving of the hand, stuff like that, that's not giving the same that was given to you, so... State your name and address again for the record.
Brian Wickes, Fairgram Engineering, in Marmell. Um, just to kinda follow up, uh, we, Fairgram and, uh, Mr. Anderson have met with the city. We've had, the team has met with the school district too. And, uh, some of the items the school district are taking on right now have been, come from our staff as recommendations as a cost-effective means to address them in the short term. Um, big picture, our goal is to provide a development that is designed, meeting the requirements, be that stormwater utilities, safety, transportation. Um, we're willing to work with the developer and he's willing to work within his means or his development. There are some things that are part of the school's responsibility too, and I think the teams are willing to work together. Um, part of the process is, no final design has been done for any of this. This is all conceptual, this is a preliminary plat that shows what the developer intends to do to get approvals from the city, so they can go into that final design. So some of the things like the final traffic study will be based on full development. The final road intersections will look at site di- lines and what should the elevations, what should be the width, should there be turning lanes? Those are all final design objectives or requirements. They've been, there's concepts of what should be done there, but there is no final design today and that final design won't proceed without some approvals from the city. And this, it's, it is the subdivision process we're going through. Mr. Anderson and our team are very willing and interested in working with the city, the school district and the neighborhood there to make the best development. And that's our goal, as well as the developers.
All right, thank you. Ten minutes, morning and afternoon.
Thank you.
David Drive, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. First off, I'll say I have no skin in the game, but what I keep hearing is that, uh, the safety issue of this is to move a, uh, caution sign back a little farther or, uh, paint some stuff on the street. People don't abide by everything that they're supposed to. The issue I see here is to get the cars that try to park along Kimball off the street. And if that's gonna take a bigger school parking lot, they need to do that. Put that, as the buses come in and go around the east side of the school, make it a parking lot out there for those pa- parents to pick it up and get them off of Kimball Avenue. You won't have kids running across the street in front of a car that's going thirty-four miles an hour. I've been out there, people don't go thirty-four, they're going forty-five. Thank you.
Questions, council?
Hi folks, uh, Bob Manning, uh, I'm the executive officer for the local Home Builders Association. I live at twenty-nine oh eight West Third Street in Cedar Falls. Um, this has been a great opportunity to, to work with, uh, Orange neighborhood, uh, folks. Uh, this is our, uh, seventh or eighth, uh, public meeting, uh, counting planning and zoning and the neighborhood meeting that we organized out at Orange School. Uh, we know that we're never gonna agree to agree on everything. Um, but, uh, one of the first issues was water pressure problems and, and we commend the Water Works for how they've addressed that. The, uh, bigger issue was the speed limit and the speeding and, and Chief Trinka, if we could, before you leave, um... I'm sorry to catch you at a bad moment, but, uh, but my understanding when we talked last week is that there would be traffic, uh, traffic, speed traffic trailer out there in the near future and that would help control the, the speeding. Um, and, uh, so I didn't know what the timeline was on that. And, and Mr. Mayor, I know I direct the questions to you, so, um...
You did, just kind of, uh, but no, keep going, you only got three minutes.
Okay. Um, and, um, so slowing the traffic down has been a big concern of the development team also. Who wants on their shoulders any safety problems, any kid problems? I've got a granddaughter that lives by the softball fields in Hudson. And it's only a quarter of a mile to school for her, but she says, "Next year, Papa, I have to take the bus to school," when she goes to kindergarten. She says, "I could walk there, Papa." I'm thinking, "There's no way I want my granddaughter walking across Highway sixty-three there, even though that's only a forty-five or forty mile an hour speed or whatever it is." I couldn't sleep at night if I knew that that was happening. And I'm glad that the bus system will pick her up at her, uh, corner block and transport her to school. Um, I'm not sure what happens when it's in third grade or, or when it changes, but, uh, her folks will have to deal with that. And, and being a grandpa, I'm gonna help out. Um, the, uh, the other thing is the congestion at the Waterloo schools. Gosh, my kids went to Kingsley and, and, um, when I drive by there on Sunset and Prospect Boulevard, uh, and the side streets, it's full of cars. And Kingsley doesn't have much for parking. Uh, and Orange could do better. Uh, we've just met with the Orange school people and have said that. They said, "Bob, we'd like to do more, but it's one of those type of issues." And so, uh, we'll be anxious to see, uh, how they control that. But in the meantime, uh, having better signage is a key part and that's what they've committed to do by the, uh, end of June.
Yeah, Mr. Chief Troka's standing up there and he was making the V-line for the bathroom and you stopped him.
That is really bad. I know. I'm just well hydrated, mayor.
In the very near future, we are going to be acquiring a, uh, speed trailer that has the ability to issue citations, so we can improve the safety in the area, as well as an un- unmarked vehicle that has the same capability with cameras and enforcement tools to issue citations. Uh, this area will be perfect for those tools to be utilized in.
You got a question? I'm asking for the last time to have a little bit of respect for people that are coming up here and talking, just like everyone else was given respect. Yes, sir.
Lynn Moller, you all know I live out in Orange. And by now, you all know I'm a retired Waterloo cop. And I've sitting ba- sitting back, listening to this stuff, I wasn't gonna say something, I'm gonna say about twenty seconds worth. Somebody says there's not enough places to build houses, doesn't live in South Waterloo. He got, uh, you, you got over by Fourth or Hoff, you got Auden Heights, you got Birch going, there's a guy down on two eighteen South, that's gonna be, he's got forty acres platted. And now up in, yeah, granted, it's in Cedar Falls, but over by Shawless and Fifty-Eight, there's another area going up. All these areas are forty-some odd acres, fifty to sixty houses apiece. My issue, and most of us here with this whole thing, I'm not making light of it here, but size does matter. All these other places are forty acres, fifty to sixty houses. Here comes Mr. Anderson with a hundred and twenty acres and two hundred plus houses. I was a cop for thirty-five years and five of those years I was a traffic cop. I'm gonna irritate some people here, but, you know, if you're doing fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour in a forty-five mile an hour zone, then I might be getting excited. People doing fifty, fifty-two, fifty-three, to me, no big deal. My issue with all of this is, there's plenty of places to build. My issue with this is the congestion. You're gonna have two hundred plus houses, some of them are going to school, some of them aren't. You're gonna have the other three areas, why not spread it out? Now, it's probably too late in the ballgame to do that now, but the, the, my only issue has ever been the traffic congestion, which it's gonna be. It's, it's gonna be, the good thing about all this, hopefully it doesn't take thirty years till this thing's fully blossomed out. But you put two hundred cars on there, some of them going to school, some of them going north, it's the congestion and a hun- two hundred plus houses in one spot. Why not spread it out? If this been, had been a forty acre thing with fifty, sixty houses like the other three to four areas in the area, we probably wouldn't even be here. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Don Share, fourteen fifteen Downing Avenue. Uh, I heard, uh, some talk about, uh, building another parking lot for, uh, for the parents to park out of the school away from the children. That sounds like that would, uh, that would fix everybody's concerns to me. So, uh, is that possible?
We, we are not the school board, Mr. Shares.
Well, can we take one of them lots that a house was going to and put a parking lot on it?
For the schools?
Sure. Would Mr. Anderson be willing to do that? To make things move forward?
Build a parking lot for the schools?
Sure.
That's a Mr. Anderson question.
Well, I just brought it up. I'm sure you'll talk to him soon.
Yep, he has representatives here too.
Okay, well, all right. That's it, thank you.
So, so, uh, I'm hoping no other developer is looking at this meeting right now. Because we would kill anything. Um, I guess no questions from council. We have a letter from the school, we have the developers. Um, they have to come back with the final plat, um, to address these concerns. This is just preliminary. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna abstain to a possible conflict of interest.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seven, eight, and nine.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a recess in five minutes so I could find somebody who's got a charger, because my iPad's about ready to go out.
I have one in my office, Mr. Morrissey.
Would that be okay? Take the five-minute recess?
Your motion been made for five minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Convene?
All right. That motion has been made with a second to reconvene, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, I had to go out and rescue, uh, Councilman Juwan. There was, uh, angry lions outside and I stepped right in front of the lion and put myself in harm's way for it, so... Uh, Tim, you can print that. Uh, mayor saves councilwoman. All right, uh, seven, eight, and nine, please. Yes, sir.
Number seven is a resolution approving an early access agreement with Advanced Heat Treat Corporation of Waterloo, Iowa would allow earthmoving activities in preparation of development of the site south of twenty-eight twenty-five Midport Boulevard. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number eight, I move to make a resolution approving submission of a certified local government grant to attend the twenty-eighteen National Association of Historic Preservation Commissioners Conference of Des Moines, Iowa, from July eighteenth to the twenty-second, twenty-eighteen. And number nine, I move to make a resolution approving acquisition contract with Gladys Properties LLC in the city of Waterloo to acquire one point seven five acres of land on WCF and North Drive for thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary paperwork.
The motion's been made with a couple seconds. Um, conversation? Yes, sir.
Instead of getting up twice, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask the question, uh, on two different ones right now. Uh, this would be on eight and, or nine and ten, excuse me. Um, it's the same question. Basically, uh, what are we gonna use this for? Do we have a developer that wants it right now and we're gonna buy it for thirty-eight five? Are we gonna get a little more money out of it than that? Or are we gonna sell it for a dollar? And the same question would be for number ten. Uh, and the second part of that is, how many acres do we now have on an oldest industrial park that are not developed and we need to have more empty lots? Something doesn't make sense to me there for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, Noel, uh, you want to answer, uh, nine and not directly answer ten? It's almost the same.
I could get up later and ask it again.
Oh, you're cool.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, I can dig it.
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director. So for number nine, this is land that is directly across the street from Hydrate. We've been seeing a lot of activity in that area with Hydrate expanding. We did buy some other land in that, that area approximately about six years ago for the same amount per acre. We do have a prospect that we are showing a portion of this land to right now. So we would hopefully flip that pretty quickly, or at least a portion of it. The intention would be to buy it with Midport TIF funds. And the intention would be to sell it through a development agreement for one dollar with a minimum assessment agreement in place so that we recoup the money through future property tax creation.
And don't answer number ten directly, but just about general sales.
General sales, let's say in the northeast industrial park type area, we would be buying land where we have a lot of infrastructure capabilities for water, sewer, rail. This would put us over, I'd say, two hundred and fifty acres of land available for industrial development. Generally, in this area of the community, because we're dealing with larger companies because of the heavy water, sewer and rail, they are larger land pads that we'd be looking at to show to prospective companies.
All right, and how would you, if, if, just say for instance, like on, if you were talking about something similar to number ten, would you?
We would be buying the land for future industrial development.
How are you paying for this stuff?
With the northeast TIF funds.
So you, okay, all right, thank you.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment, we've asked in the past, don't expand the TIFs. Is this already in the TIF? In the TIF property, or do we have to expand the TIF area again?
Hypothetically, in the northeast area, this land is actually in the county. So we'd be annexing the land and putting it into the TIF district for development purposes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Use the word TIF, economical TIF?
State your name and address, sir.
Forrest Dillavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I thought maybe you knew who I was.
I do, but those that want to see your.
Most of them do. Anyway, are these economical TIFs or are these urban renewal TIFs on these two?
So you want to know if they're economic development or urban renewal on items?
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director. All, all TIF districts are in the urban renewal section of the state code. The Midport TIF is a blighted TIF, the northeast industrial park area is a economic development TIF.
All right, thank you.
So the, the years are indefinite?
For an economic development TIF, there would be a twenty-year timeframe.
Unless we extend it, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you, ten, eleven and twelve.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving real estate purchase agreement between Johnny Rodinghouse and Desi M. Rodinghouse in the city of Waterloo, Iowa for the acquisition of nineteen point zero eight acres generally located near Elkhorn Road north of Tannery Drive in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand to allow for industrial development and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number eleven, a resolution appointing Jamie Knudsen, associate engineer, as designated authorized representative with the Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Department. And twelve is a resolution approving acceptance of grant from RJ McElroy Trust in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in conjunction with the Lincoln Park improvements project and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, someone take thirteen and fourteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number thirteen, I move to make a resolution authorizing submission of application to Blackhawk County, Blackhawk Gaming Association for grant funding up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a fifty percent match of departmental funds to construct a vehicle evidence storage facility. And you said thirteen, fourteen, right?
Yes, sir.
Number fourteen, I move to make a resolution approving award of bid to B and B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of three hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars thirty-eight cents. And approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the FY twenty-eighteen sidewalk repair program zone eight, contract number nine four eight. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
If council doesn't have any angst, you can take fifteen and sixteen.
And number fifteen, I move to make a resolution approving award of bid to Midturn Inc. of Brooklyn, Iowa in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred seventy-six, seventy-six dollars. And approving the contract bonds and certificate of, of insurance in conjunction with the FY twenty-eighteen Bridge and Culvert Repairs Contract Number nine fifty. And authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said documents. And then on number sixteen, I move to make a resolution approving installation of a twenty-five mile per hour speed hump in the five hundred block of Beach Street.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, sir.
Yes, concerning number thirteen, my name is John Sherbin, I live at seventeen fifteen Robin Road. We brought up a question here a few months, weeks ago about the Johnstone Building being used as evidence room. It is a huge building, it's got a warehouse type back area. For the cost, we've already paid for it. It's been sitting for quite a little while. Now, for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have to match that or less, we could put air conditioning and climate control in, use the big section, use the little section for whatever, because we're going to grow out of that building anyway. I don't know where we're planning on putting the other building. And you can't build much for five hundred thousand dollars as compared to what that could be remodeled for. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, someone take seventeen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file and consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the two thousand eight Traffic Code, Section five forty, obedience to official traffic control devices by adding subsection fifty-eight A. to Buke Road and Osage Road, full actuated.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you, eighteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schimpf?
Mr. Mayor, number eighteen, I move to make a motion for request by Embankment LLC to rezone zero point eight seven acres from R four CZ multiple residence conditional zoning district to C two commercial district for construction of a multi-tenant retail center located west of twelve oh three West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I would like to make a few comments here. And then I will be making a motion to table or to postpone, excuse me Sharon, indefinitely until something gets worked out. First of all, when this was presented to us, I believe that it was presented as a development that would be a neighborhood type of business establishment with retail, food and coffee. Yet, being on the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, you know, we take a look at all these different developments and out there, there's no sidewalks that are required to be there on either Amesboro or Ridgway or on Dixon Drive. There's no pedestrian accommodations that are required out there. And the need for such can be seen if just you look at the attachments, look at the picture section. You're going to see in picture number two and pic, picture number seven, in those attachments, first in picture number two, you're going to see a walking path in the grass for people that have been walking along there and have beaten it down so bad that it almost looks like a cow path. And also in picture number seven, you're going to see a person walking, carrying bags along Amesboro Avenue there. To me, that if anything else points out the need for there to be sidewalks there, especially when we're putting what is said to be a neighborhood friendly group of businesses going in there, again, food, coffee shop and other retail. Thirdly, Ridgway will be reconstructed, reconstructed, reconfigured sometime in the near future, it sounds like. And with residential areas in that immediate vicinity and other amenities, there is a probable need for pedestrian accommodations along Ridgway and I dare say along Amesboro as well. Fourth, the developer, I believe, and I don't have any problem with the developer at all, but I believe wants to be a neighborhood friendly type of development out there, which is what pedestrian accommodations provide, rather than just having it be a development that caters just to people driving their cars and parking in the parking lot. I think it misses a boat there. And I would ask the developer, go back in and talk to the city of Waterloo about some requirements or putting in sidewalks along Ridgway and Amesboro for sure. And finally, at the Complete Streets Advisory Committee meeting that we had last Tuesday, there is an entrepreneur over there at the old Saint John School and church area and parking lot that in their proposal, they are required, required to put in sidewalk all along Verden Street going down the full length of where they are going to be using that property and how they're going to be using it. And that's no small chunk of sidewalk going in there. And I believe that Embankment LLC needs to be held to that same standard in their rezone request. So for that reason, I, I would be opposed to this third reading. But rather than opposing it, I would ask the developer to meet with the city council to have us postpone this until after that meeting takes, takes place. And that there can be some change in this that requires sidewalks along Ridgway and Amesboro Avenue, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. No comments, Madam Clerk for the postponement indefinitely?
Doesn't have a second.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're vote on the postponement.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, Madam Clerk? There's still some people here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, number nineteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Number nineteen is a motion to receive file, consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a rezone of certain property located adjacent to fifty fifty Falk Road.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. A motion's been made with the second, Mr. Zellifer?
David Zellifer, city attorney, we are moving to executive session properly. And there's pending litigation pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one C.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I would ask that the council come on.